Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town committee's select board meeting for May 7, 2019. I want to go right into our agenda and talk to many public in for non-agenda items. Does anybody need to go?
No.
Number two, Scott. This is just a little heads up regarding the bridge on Rossin Avenue that it has been closed off. I just want to make sure and maybe get some guidance from the select board. There's a very special tree at that bridge. It's called a tulip tree or tulip pugler. It's the biggest, most impressive tree that certainly I've seen that the Doug Johnson of treekeepers has seen in our area. And he there, very unusual to see it in this town. And it's right next to the bridge on the north side. It's on Tom Ressick's property. So, given that it's so close to the bridge and it's such a unique tree, we want to be sure that it's well cared for during that process.
Whatever process there may be.
Whatever process there may be with regard to the bridge, particularly with this demolition, which is probably going to happen.
They said like a raze out.
Yeah, just a raze out. The report is written, this is what the record, the report is written as. Their inspection suggested for safety reasons, at this point, to close the bridge to quote pedestrian, can't get particular traffic. And will remain that way until quote there's either demolition or replacement. So, that process is going to take some time to finalize. I suppose you talked to them at some place, but we'll get to that in a couple of years.
Well, I'll try to help you remember. I'm sure Tom will too, because he cares about the bridge as well.
A good point.
And I'd also like to, while I'm talking about the bridge, lodge a neighborhood-wide request that we somehow have pedestrian access ultimately. If there is no, if you, if the town decides not to rebuild the bridge, that there be pedestrian and bicycle access across the bridge. This is particularly important for the children getting to school because we don't have a sidewalk on Rossin Avenue on either of its legs nor on Ames Terrace. And in order to walk to school, they would have to walk down Ames Terrace and before they can get to a sidewalk. So, Rossin Avenue has been a top priority according to the Pathways Master Plan for a sidewalk. But it is still way low on the town's priorities in this case.
I don't.
And so, there's concern about walkability in the neighborhood and losing the walkability in that particular spot. So, if there's anything the Pathways Committee can do to somehow move forward that issue, I don't know whether we need to look for a grant or for a pedestrian bridge. I'm just not sure exactly what the process would be about trying to.
Well, first of all, we've got to get back in contact with D O T and from that perspective. From that point, we'll probably have a word discussion of the plan might be going forward. But I think it's suspicious, not going to be a short-term plan, it's going to be longer term.
I mean, where we left it, we did that feasibility study to try and determine, you know, what the likely cost would be. Because D O T made it pretty clear that they would not pay for the entire cost of reconstructing that bridge. Their plans currently as they stand are to dead-end, you know, remove the bridge and dead-end both ends of the street. They were very receptive to the idea of replacing the bridge if we came up with 50% of the funding for it. But we're looking at, you know, anywhere between half a million and a million dollars to do so. And really with pedestrian bridges, I mean, there is some cost savings to that, but not, it's still a great deal of money.
Well, please appreciate some guidance as to how to pursue that. Because it's kind of a problem, I know it's a small area, but it is an issue especially for schoolchildren.
I'll finish.
Well, how about just text? I need a, I need a, Audrey, have we had in contact yet with D O T yet? Oh, we have.
No, not since the bridge was closed.
Which came on this, by the way. We had a 10 days old bridge, so there's a hundred calls from the D O T because they reported it in March. There's a lot of stuff to, literally a lot of bridges across this one, we still need to stay paid.
Right, I'm wondering whether Audrey would consider giving updates anytime she learns, even if her town manager's in board. I think that would be helpful for us to learn. And I don't know whether folks in general know the history of that neighborhood, but Ames Terrace used to be a dead end before the early 50s. And Rossin Avenue goes up to Ames Terrace and then takes a 90-degree turn and goes down to Washington Street. So, that's why it's named that way, but takes that odd turn. The town took ownership and widened the section of Ames Terrace where it ended, where it came to an end, and made a connection to Rossin Avenue. And that's why it goes Rossin to Ames in a straight line. And I think, I was thinking about this, and I suspect that the reason the bridge existed in the first place is that those roads didn't connect. And so, that connection, that was a connection to Washington historically from mechanic and Ames Terrace was just a little dead end. So, I just thought that might be interesting to mention to folks in case they're wondering maybe why D O T doesn't think it's a priority because of the other connection. But for pedestrians and bicyclists, it's a much bigger deal than it is for cars. Thank you.
I, if you can come on stand for just a second. I've talked to several people about the Rossin Avenue sidewalk. And a lot of the time when we sit doing, or the last two years when we've sat and done the budget, we've tried to find a place where, like, okay, we were going to allocate more money to such and such a line so that we could create another sidewalk. Where could we do it? And we've not really been able to come up with a feasible, you know, all the different streets that we've come up with have been like, well, that one would be bajillions of dollars. So, that doesn't make sense, and that doesn't make sense. I know there was an effort with Rossin Avenue a while back that kind of fell apart because the neighbors didn't, nobody wanted to go on their side of the street.
Well, that goes before my time.
Oh.
And I've been here 26 years, so I don't know if there was an actual sidewalk yet, but there might have been. I'm just not familiar with it.
But maybe it would be good for Pathways just to send the select board an updated version of what you do see as the priorities.
Or, they're familiar with it and we look at Elm Street as our much higher priority.
Who's they?
Uh, Pathways.
Oh, no, I was saying if Pathways could send an updated priority list to the select board.
But we do. I'm saying we as a Pathways Committee member.
Oh, I'm just saying as a select board member, I don't know if I've seen that. I mean, or maybe you can send it.
Good idea. Thanks, Nathan, thank you very much. Anybody else from public or non-agenda that might not see any hands when referred to select board reports and town manager reports at the same time? I need that in the phone because, again, I'm kind of falling asleep. But we'll start with Jennifer.
I can, in the meantime, let Mark go.
I have a few things. First off, I have a question for Audra. Since the news, or Jeremy maybe, since the news last week that D O T's projected projects were all way over budget and they sort of seemed like they were going to step back from doing anything. Do we know how that's going to affect any of the town projects yet that we have, Route 1 North, Route 1 South?
Well, I can speak to Route 1 North. I met the commissioner, Bruce Van, no, the commissioner of D O T, but the discussions on the ferry project or ferry rates, which is a process of yours, you know. They are having some projects that are going to be a budget. What they're looking at is not the limiting project, but changing the scope of projects. That's what they probably have to take a look at until this construction thing turns down. And they predict that to be in the late 2000s, but we'll see.
So, we don't know yet?
I don't, I think it's too soon until they bid out something like.
I mean, the projects that we have that are closest to being able to go out to bid are Route 1 South again. And we all know that that came in so far over budget that we're looking at rebidding it, packaging it with a 105 sidewalk. And of course, the sidewalk is a short tail point on 105. We currently have an appraiser doing the right-of-way work on 105. And, you know, once that's done and we, you know, get all the easements that we need from the property owner's out project, we'll be ready to go out to bid with the Route 1 South project as well. And I think that all depends on the price that comes back as to whether or not that can move forward.
Number two, Camden Conservation Commission meeting. We discussed, there was a new intern that has been hired for the summer and will be working on the pollution in the harbor issues. And so, looking forward to that. Looks like we have a great, great candidate working for us again this summer. They've had three summers, I think, of really good interns working for the town and looking forward to this summer's candidate. And then lastly, I was talking about the Opera House. We had our Opera House meeting. We'll be talking about a couple of new members for the Opera House Committee further on and, you know, the good members, a really strong committee right now. Really strong grouping of shows coming, different kinds of things. The main thing, of course, I've been talking about Jazz and June Festival. Our first jazz festival for Camden will be June 14 through 16. Tickets are available. You now have, there are now hats and t-shirts. All the bands have been booked. There will be, there'll be stuff at the Opera House, stuff at the library, stuff at some of the local restaurants. There'll be shows at the Snow Bowl. So, it's going to be a wide-ranging festival for the town, which should be a really great event. And then lastly, Dave has been trying different kinds of events. And we haven't been talking about the Blue Cafe, which is usually once a Friday night, an event that's for free, paid out of some sort of fund that we have somewhere. I don't remember which one. And it's been great that we've had poets, we've had jazz people, we've had honky-tonk singers. This past Friday night was a session called Storytime Moms Tell All. And it was a group of, I think, 10 or 12 mothers from the town that talked about all the issues that moms talked. It was the most well-attended. There were 40 seats there and then overflowed when we had about 80 people there. And I have, for years, if you watch my show, you watch David Letterman, you see them occasionally have comedians on and you watch and you go, they're not so funny. This was the funniest night I think I've ever had in my life. I went to tears when I got to see this. One of the, one of the great stories that started it out was Karina, who was our, just left on for maternity. She had just had a child and the story was amazing, but she decided to, her previous two children were a couple of weeks late. So, she thought she'd be safe having, going, taking the week off before her due date so she had time to get ready for the child. So, the last day she was working, she was training a new person taking her job, and all of a sudden, baby was coming. And she was waiting for a home birth. She lived 25 minutes away from the Opera House and to a whole great comedy of events, including Dave and Dag, I mean, the new assistant, the new people, the new assistant at the Opera House, who helped get the blankets and the sheets and the towels and the water and everything ready. The baby was born 50 minutes after she first felt it, it's a 25-minute drive to her house. And it was one of the funniest stories I've ever heard. So, great night. I call it to say is, you know, when you see the new flyer, this new card flyer they've developed for the Opera House, look at the shows that are coming, all different kinds. There's something for everybody and it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing for our town that we have here, we're lucky to have.
Thank you, Margaret.
Oh, yeah, we had a successful Camden cleanup. We had probably 15 volunteers each day, probably a little bit more. We collected roughly 1,000 pounds of trash. We plus the Route 1 cleanup did about 2,000 pounds out of Camden off of Route 1. So, these were separated out. We had our normal Camden roadside cleanup and then there was also a countywide cleanup organized for all of Route 1, for all of Knox County. And certain sections of that road hadn't been cleaned in a long, long time. So, that was a really cool initiative and it happened on the same day because of our delay that we had to do for the Camden portion. But that was very successful. Some people have been working on the McDonaghy River, cleaning more along the riverside as well. And I think there's a group in the middle school that is going to be going out this week and working on the river as well. So, lots of trash picked up in Camden. This time we actually did a better job separating out the returnables and those didn't get weighed. So, that probably brought our totals down a little bit. Some of us went over the scale of the returnables and some of us didn't. But, so that was very successful. The interfluke study came out this week, Friday afternoon, so the Montgomery Dam feasibility study, which is the most exciting thing that's happened to me for a while. So, that, I don't know if the select board has that, I don't think so. Yeah, we should put it on our website. But that'll be exciting. And then we released the video publicly of the one that I showed you all last week, two weeks ago. And that has now, I would say, before it was me, the Mechanic Street parking lot, that had been the item that I've been most contacted about for, as a select board member. But that's definitely overtaken, Mechanic Street parking lot. I've kind of so, it's been shared 200 times and I've gotten, it really, really encouraged actually. There are so many people that I didn't even realize lived in Camden that have contacted me wanting to help with river restoration efforts in some way. So, that has been very encouraging. And everybody should start looking down at the harbor now too, because this is the time when sea run fish do start trying to come up. So, we're working to get some student volunteers out there too to do some more structured monitoring so we can document all the different fish that they receive trying to access the river.
Don't rover duckies go down around this time of year?
Yeah, that, maybe even, yeah. No, that's Sunday the 25th. And they're not, they aren't forever. They are plastic. But we've worked a lot, we've talked a lot with the rover club this year and they have a very extensive plan in place to try and capture all of the ducks. They've purged many of their, from their fleet that were more prone to the immediate sinking. We're going to, in the days after, we're going to draw down the impoundment there too. A lot of them get stuck in that, they get stuck in the dam, they get stuck in that island in the middle. So, and they get, some of them just immediately sink right down into the sort of Camden Valley impoundment.
Mention what you're referring to, because you and I, we know.
The duck derby, we're talking about the duck derby.
That was a great one.
Yeah, and so, I have actually had a lot of people approach me concerned about the intentional release of the ducks into, into the river. And, but rover, I mean, rover's been very receptive to that. They're very concerned about it too. We're going to turn it into an opportunity to make everybody more aware of all the different types of trash that gets stuck in there. One of the things that we've been doing with the, with the Montgomery Dam study is drawing down the impoundment. So, that gives us an opportunity to see all of the junk that gets stuck. And it's definitely, you see the plastic ducks, but that's really only a small part of it. Laminated menus and pool toys from, you know, all the way up from the lake. There's, I mean, there's just so much trash. And a lot of the time when people see those ducks because they're larested, but you don't notice all the other things. So, we're going to do a big cleanup of that whole area in conjunction and they, they're going to kind of help the ducks. Yeah.
Just a couple of status things from my perspective. One is, we did a very productive, I thought, workshop session with library trustees and Nikki. Thanks for saying, helping us set it up a very productive, we should be a consultant. I think it's just a start of dialogue between us and the library in terms of some principles matters. One is which, you know, the federal understanding from the library trustee perspective of the town's needs and concerns and challenges. And we, select board and Audrey, I wanted to hear more from the trustees and their needs and concerns because we need to look forward to all the challenges we have in the infrastructure across the board. It was a very, very productive meeting. We scheduled the second one for May 20th, again, to get into more agenda-specific items. The other one I wanted to mention was just the status of our solar project. And at Sagwell Farm, we've had some issues, which not as good, but, you know, makes you some of the accounting. We found that we were producing more kilowatt hours than were being used by our cash meters. The meters just weren't, we're not using enough electricity, I guess, in a sense. But we were paying, we have been paying for those kilowatt hours and with us in our vision manager, we're looking at trying to correct that situation before those, a chunk of kilowatt is lost in terms of energy credits. And provision is working very actively with us to do that. It's going to, anyway, still, one of the requests is going to be for them to come in and be able to borrow our C N P files for a few days to the other. I told them, get clearance from the town, be able to do that before we get authorized, something like that. And that's it for me. Audrey, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, so this is Municipal Clerks Week and as part of Municipal Clerks Week, it's a good opportunity to recognize clerks from towns and cities across Maine. They do a lot to keep our communities running. And MMA has been featuring one clerk per county over the week. And I think very deservedly for Knox County, our very own Katrina Oaks was the feature clerk. Recognize Katrina publicly and all the great work that she does for the town of Camden. She's been here for a while. She's had a lot of different roles within the town and she's a fantastic clerk. It really keeps things going here. And I'd also like to thank Kendall and Liz Nowor. Kendall's our minute taker for tonight, but she also acts as a deputy clerk during the day and so does Liz. And they do a lot to keep things going as well. So, thank you all for the wonderful work you have done.
Onto approval of select board minutes for April 23, 2019. Any comments or corrections?
Couple corrections and number two, select board reports. There's a sentence that says, Mark Rattner attended the energy committee, they're trying to get the meetings. What that meant is we're trying to get the meetings screened as part of what we're doing. And I have one other correction. I can't remember where it was. So, what one would you ask us here?
Well, I had one, just at the very end, it says, select board generally detail, it says 500, we want to record this here.
400.
Nice job, by the way.
Yeah, excellent job.
Thank you.
Really, well done.
After the fight to find the typo.
And that's one was a small typo. It was, oh, it was the word, it was statue instead of statue. Somewhere in there. There, it's a number 10, Schedule Public hearing for amendment. The statue says that you, the select board, shall be the legislative body for traffic issues. I'd like to know which statue that is.
You haven't read that or something?
I haven't read that.
It's very jazzy.
Oh, yes. Yes, sorry. So.
Back to Audrey.
Yes, okay.
Before you close up.
Make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion. We approved the board minutes from, what is it?
April 23rd. Sorry. Okay, discussion, all's in favor? Oh, yeah, 401, is that correct? You have to extend, yes. Now, we'll go to the end that I didn't remember.
Yes, so another part of my report that we wanted to talk about a little bit was some further assessment work we're going to be doing on the riverbank abutting the Tannery site. So, I think everybody knows there's quite a bit of material there that's, you know, being exposed as, you know, the river further erodes. You know, especially with sort of a spring, a fall, winter, spring like we've had where there's been heavy rainfall and, you know, a lot of water moving through there. We're further seeing more and more materials.
We've been seeing it for a kind of a while.
Oh, yeah, a long time. And, you know, we really thought that this is kind of our last chance to bring this issue up again and try to get some resolution to it for once and for all. And Jeremy Martin went through and looked at sort of the report that the first, I think it was the first assessment done by Summit Engineering. Do you want to go?
Sure. Yeah, Summit one was back in 2001 and actually prior to that, D E P had done one back in 1996. And none of this material, none of this, any reconnaissance on phase ones or phase twos that were done, whether it was by the D E P, Summit or Ransom. It showed any of this, what D E P has called some waste. So, I went, I went through all those reports and then I have a consultant, Brian Slikey from Siler Services, a consulting firm. He went through all those reports as well. And he agreed that those areas were not addressed at all, other than doing some groundwater samples and some sediment samples from the river. And he believes we need to move forward at look, addressing that and assessing the volume of material that may be there. And then whether or not there's any contaminants in that area. I did speak with the Hodgins from D E P today about it. Frankly, wasn't all that helpful. That said, he understood where I was coming from, where the town's coming from this. And he's told, he will attend an meeting that I will set up with Siler Services and Ransom, Steve Dyer from Ransom. And we will be coming up with a plan to address it. Again, now's the time to deal with it when we have cleanup funds. We certainly don't want this to come and bite us later, whether it's five years from now or 10 years from now or 20 years from now. And like Audrey said, that bank is eroding. And I talked to Nick about that as well. That's a concern. And frankly, the cap will ultimately need to probably include this whole area over to the bank. And so, likely there will be some excavation, trench excavation, that means to happen to assess kind of the extent of the material in the ground. And after, when we do that, we're likely, we'll assess, do some soil samples to assess the contamination of the ground. And then we'll develop a plan moving forward to remove some of that material. Again, we don't know the extent of it, the depth of it. There's some areas that's pretty, that appears to be pretty deep. Likely if contamination is not found, likely we would try to remove everything possible and then use some geotextile fabric and then rewrapped in some areas. And that's the plan moving forward. And talking with Brian Slikey from Siler Services today about the R P and all of that. This is the right time to do it. And he'll give us some guidance on that as well. And again, Steve Dyer from Ransom, we're working, we'll look at this. I tried to reach out to Steve today and get him reading through the reports. It's pretty clear that, and I talked to him, Steve was here a couple of months ago, that they're going to talk to Nick today. Their focus was, their scope was pretty focused on an area and didn't really go beyond that area. That's unfortunate. I don't know why that was the way it was, might have been D E P's approach back in 1996 and they just kept carrying it along. I don't know. It might also been when we had, did the grant with Ransom, that the focused area. Remember, Ransom was looking at this initially to try to assess whether or not the slurry wall was still functioning as designed. Now, those slurry walls are designed to, that slurry wall is designed for 100 years. Maybe assessed three years later or something like that. That's just kind of interesting. But, and they found out that the slurry wall was still functioning. So, that was really good that they were looking uphill from that, uphill from that. So, I mean, that's the plan right now. I would assume we'll have an assessment plan done within the next few weeks, I'm hoping, on how we can move forward and how we should assess that area. Even my grant, the cleanup grant is a three-year. We have until September 2021 to use that, those cleanup funds. So, I'm not concerned right now at all about the timing of the cap. That said, again, working with a potential developer that would help develop a portion or all of the site, you know, we need to get this right right now. And especially we encourage people, we have this pedestrian walkway, we encourage people to recreate along the river. walkway, we encourage people to recreate along the river. And this access trail corridor right now, I mean, there are like six foot paths right down to the river. It's a problem. And we need to limit our liabilities and limit any risk that we have out there now for the future. So, I appreciate Allison for stick to it and stuff on this.
Well, obviously, we're, can you give us continued consent agenda? Is there any?
Absolutely. I'll do it. We'll through Audrey's reports and he's kind of wanting to come back here and compliment us.
And this, I mean, this guy, he did look at, sent out a bunch of pictures. And so it's, it's not just like, oh, well, let's see if there's a problem or there isn't. It's clear, any reasonable person that looks at this can see it stretches along a big distance. He says, however, it is clear from the photographs you provided that the non-soil waste and material along the riverbank are in part originating from the mill at Tannery operation and do present at a minimum a physical exposure hazard to human users in the river quarter and what goes on and on. But, you know, it's, it's the actual waste, we've tested the soil and water a lot, but it's the actual waste material. So, I'm thrilled that we're continuing on with this.
Yeah, when I was down there and then looking at old Camden Herald archives, you look at material that was being hauled off and, you know, asbestos shingles and roofing materials that were being hauled off and they're placing them in these photos in the dumpsters, protected dumpsters we haul off to an appropriate landfill site.
And you're like, oh, this is not.
There's some of that material down along the riverbank still. And likely, who knows how it got there. It might have been, you know, blown off, sure, they were flying while they were doing that, sure enough. But, I mean, that material's down there. In some areas, there's woolen material that is so thick and, I mean, it's very odd. There are some areas that there's no forests, like kind of, for decades, you have leaves and, you know, a duff layer being created generally. In some areas of that riverbank, there is no duff layer. It's just the same as it was probably for decades of this felt woolen material still there. No leaves or, there's nothing growing in it. There's no soil being established on it. I mean, we ought to, we should address it. And there are metal chunks and barrels and.
Storage tanks.
All sorts of stuff.
Shoe leather.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to read, read what Allison's having private for doing this now. I took the opportunity myself last week, put my layers on, walked up the whole middle of the river last week to look at it. And it's pretty obvious along the banks there that erosion naturally happens in the springtime when the water is high, it's been eroding away the bank. And the only, the only reason we're probably seeing that, so oasis, it's the road to the bank that's been covered for so many years. And it is like just a few steps from the riverwalk and not something that we want to be leaving there as we're encouraging folks to use that area. We definitely need to get it right.
I just wanted to add, I want to second, Jeremy said, this is the power that one person can have. Allison has been talking about this for years and her dedication to it is maybe solve a huge problem for us in the future and, and safety for the residents or children, whatever. But, kudos to her for staying with it.
Thank you, Jeremy, for asking. I'm not a crazy person. Like, previous staff people have here, and I, I mean, I've taken, some of the previous, all the people that work for the town down there and said, are you kidding me? Why, what are, what are we doing? Why don't we include this in the next grant cycle? And they basically said, it would be better if you didn't bring that up in a public meeting. Or how about we'll just show the pictures to our consultants and that. So, thank you for following through.
And then on the table.
Hopefully we can have somebody else station up and not us.
That's, yeah. Moving on, then Allison and Neil, so Audrey, I just wanted to make that back.
Sure.
Jeremy. Oh, thank you. Anyway, we get, the next time is our consent agenda, which we have four items. First is a consideration of the House Committee of Conductance in the form of Roland Finley and Chris Lindquist. Secondly, we have confirmation of two Camden public library trustees in the name of Ken Gardner and John Fitzgerald. We have the third is designation of the register of those office hours, which means regular business hours for the 20th of June, 11-12 annual town meeting. And lastly, the approval of the Camden Farmers Market meeting, which we discussed last time. Are there any objections to the items on the consent agenda?
Oh, I was just going to ask and seeing that Nikki's in the audience, we had this workshop with the library board and talked about how we sort of approve library trustees on the recommendation of the library board. But I'm wondering if either of these two trustees are here, if we could pull this off the consent agenda first of all.
We can do that.
And if either of the trustees are here or if Nikki could perhaps get up and speak to who they are and give us a little background. We do have applications for the folks from the Opera House and we, we know a little bit more information.
We will take it off the consent agenda and I'll ask if there are any objections to the other, other three items on the consent agenda.
I just might add the changes from last time in the farmers market, so the changes that Jeremy made, Nikki, they're totally appropriate and good.
And they're okay with it?
They are, yeah.
Other objections, then with those, and hereby adopted in the current discussion on agenda item for the confirmation of Mr. 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 Gardner, trustee, Nikki?
Yeah, okay, sorry. So, we thought we were gonna, we had that conversation about trying to look at the total and see if we could collectively decide what skills were needed or. Well, these two trustees have been in the process for some, okay. So, these are two local citizens. Ken Gardner is a representative of this community. John Fitzgerald represents, is my school teacher. And I think they would give value to the library board.
Will this fill the library board with these two acquaintances?
I think we have one coming up vacancy. I mean, we have one vacancy now and may have another one or two before, by the end of the calendar year, if the people are tired.
So, I just, I just got to know, what are these terms of trustees, benefit?
It's, we have between 11 and 17 trustees. They run them into three years when they can have a second term and that they must, must go off.
Other questions?
I happen to know both of these individuals just peripherally and I, I do think that they would serve the community quite well. I just think from a procedural standpoint, given what we've talked about, that it was important to just sort of, I don't really do this little exercise, but kind of just to ask a little bit more about them. And it would be, be nice to be able to see in the future, just a little bit of information like we get on a committee forum.
Sure.
But I personally would move to approve these two library trustees.
Any other discussion?
No, I was just going to say I've gotten John Fitzgerald a little bit through the Moore and Working Group. I'm going to reiterate what kind of wonderful work they've done and that's giving us that.
Any other comments, discussion? All's in favor? Five zero.
Thanks so much, Nikki.
I just want to, just one more comment to wrap that up. What any public library board does is represent different factions of the community. We do strive to do that. And I think we did that with a good discussion when we talked about that. And we will continue to, to try to do that. But it was good to hear about how others might perceive what is that we're doing. So, I think that's good information.
Thank you so much, Allison.
Thank you, Nikki. Next agenda will be the presentation of the school board budget, budgets for FY '20 for Temessee City. You can see F D.
Let's meet Paul.
Oh, sure.
Hi. So, I'm a area living superintendent of schools. I'm also a Camden resident. And we have four commissioners in our audience today on the S E D board, Matt Daley, Marcia Dietrich, Carol Garley, and Peter Moore. And I also have my business manager, Jacey Miller here. Just in case I don't know answers to questions, I'm going to be shouting out for light ones. So, I'll try to go pretty quickly through. We've got, you know, two districts' budgets to go through, but I'll try to go quickly. If you're asking questions as we go, sometimes questions are answered later in the presentation. So, we could wait until the end as well. I'm happy either way. So, S E D 28 request to budget, just starting with the mission of the S E D district. It is to be kind, work hard, and keep learning. As we created our budget, we used five basic budgeted filters. And they are what is in the best interest of our students, what is needed for continual improvement, how do we prioritize quality instruction, what is needed to move forward on our strategic plan, and what is fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. And those were the budget filters we used to build the business. But the first half of this is about the S E D. So, I'm going to start with the bottom line. And the bottom line is that our budget is coming in, we're looking at it two different ways. One way without our debt service, and that's 3.46% increase. But when you add the increase in debt service to the budget scenario, our expense increase comes in at 8.04%. And that increase in debt is mainly due to the Mary Taylor renovation. And the overall taxpayer impact, once we include the revenue side of our budgets, is 7.26%. This chart shows the enrollment, the size of our district over the past 10 years. And the top school is the elementary school and then the bottom is middle school. And then the, actually, the very bottom is the total combined. You can see that there has not been a large fluctuation, really, in the past 10 years in our school population. And I don't expect really there to be one. We actually are expecting a fairly small kindergarten class this year, which I think we'll see all the way through. But when we look at the live births at Penn Bay, this year was, I mean, the year that this year, the next year's kindergarten students, the year they were born, like 2014, was an exceptionally low birth rate at Penn Bay. And that's like, it was kind of anomaly. And so I'm thinking we're going to see that in kindergarten this year. Our 10-year budget increases, you know, until 2019, they've been hovering somewhere between 0 and 2%. And then in 2019, the huge increase of 17.25 was due to the middle school project. And then this year is due to the M E T project. So, the past two years, our increases have been quite a bit higher than they typically are. Nonetheless, our 10-year average is actually fairly, fairly lean at 3.02%. And the taxpayer impact is 3.43%. So, next I'm going to take you through the different articles in the budget that are approved and the change for each article compared to last year. So, the first article and the biggest one in our budget is regular, actually probably other than the debt service, is regular instruction. Actually, that's higher than our debt service. And there was just a modest increase, 2.07%. And we've highlighted some of the things that are in that budget line. So, on the left, under regular instruction, you can see it's teacher salaries, teacher health benefits, teacher supplies, teacher professional development, and contracted services for students. And then underneath the chart, we've just shown what is happening in that line in next year's budget. So, we've got base wages increasing for the contracts. In our schools, teachers' contract is increasing 2.25%. Ed techs, bus drivers, food service, custodians, maintenance are all increasing 2%. In addition, people within those contracts, if they're basically between 0 and 20 years working in our district, actually, for teachers, it's that much time as a teacher. But if, between 0 and 20 years, people are also moving up a step, which is an increase we don't see in this base increase. So, that contributes to the overall increase in our regular instruction line. Typically, if we just looked at teacher wages, it's a 3% impact on our budget each year. We have, our health increases came in at 2.4%, so that's where they are in our budget. We are adding a teacher in grade one and grade four next year. And we're reducing a teacher in grade three. So, really, there's only a net add of one teacher there. We are eliminating an additional teacher that we had in kindergarten and grade five. So, we have an extra teacher this year in kindergarten and an extra teacher in grade five. We actually hadn't budgeted for the kindergarten position because those numbers came in over the summer, that we always face that position in the summertime to get 10 extra students enrolled in the summer in kindergarten. We try as hard as we can to get everybody out of the woodwork in, you know, March and April so that we know how many students are coming. But some years, we'll get 15 more kids in August and there's not much we can do except for hire a teacher at the last minute. And we couldn't have anticipated it.
Is that because parents haven't got with the program or is it because people have moved or?
I'll tell you about it back.
Combo pattern.
We are also eliminating an English language learner and re recovery position. We're going to contract out some of those services. We have a decrease in our professional development line. We do have an extra ed tech in our budget, which isn't an additional ed tech, but we didn't budget for last year. And even though we had it, it was kind of mistaken in last year's budget, but we're correcting that. So, it's not anyone new, but it wasn't an additional cost. And in this budget, we actually are implementing a new middle school math program next year. That's also included in the budget. Special ed had an increase of 4.59%. And special ed includes all of the people who work in that department and their benefits, P D, contracted services, tuition money we might be paying for special ed students to, who are out of our district, and money in our contingency. That will, that, those increases are mainly due to wages and health. And we, this year, we were able to pay for an ed tech out of our local entitlement money, which is federal money. Next year, we're not going to be able to do that because we need our local entitlement money, local entitlement money for extra services that students need, such as speech and language, occupational therapy. And that has to come out of local entitlement. So, we can't afford to cover the ed tech any longer in our federal money. So, we have to shift that over and have it in the regular budget. But that's an increase for us in our regular budget. We've also increased our contingency line, especially at $35,000 to $50,000. And that is there as a buffer against the risk of having out of district placements unknown to us when we create the budget.
So, what, what are the reasons that we would have to send us a student out of district? Is that because for some reason our district, it seems like our district is so capable?
I know. We are very capable. And we have a lot of programs. I mean, we have, we're in special ed, we have multiple, like in addition to your everyday special ed program, there's special ed teachers who support students in the regular classroom. And sometimes those students have pull out math or something. But on top of that, we also have life skills programs in both the elementary and the middle school. And we have a self-contained behavior program, kind of like a day treatment program, in both the elementary and the middle schools, which we didn't always have all of those programs. So, we are able to more adeptly meet the needs of more of our students. But there are still some students for whom our self-contained programs, mostly it's a self-contained behavioral program, still cannot meet the needs of a student who is, and we're really so far down that spectrum of need that we just can't manage it in a public school setting. And so, right now, we have a student who we have a private placement for. And there are other ones that we just don't know if we're going to be able to do what needs to be done.
And so then we're required to pay, the district, our district is required to pay for that determination is made by?
Correct.
So, okay. Do other, do we end up with students from other places because of that?
Yep. We're getting a nice chunk of tuition money from a neighboring district right now because we have one of their special ed students and they're paying to have that student here and they're paying specialty costs for it. So, that does, you know, occasionally that happens. And occasionally, we will look to potentially place a student in another district. And we used to do that more when we didn't have our own day treatment programs. But for the most part, we have our day treatment program, so we don't need to do that. Most of the regional day treatment programs are full. It can't accept anybody anyways. So, occasionally, there is a need for a private placement. So, other instruction includes co-curricular athletics in summer school, and that is an increase of 7.34%, even though the total dollar amount isn't actually that significant. But we have a few new stipend positions. Stipends go up every year as well in terms of the way. Stipends go up every year as well in terms of the wage. We had an increase in our athletic supply line and increase in our G C P's. But again, not huge money in the bottom line there.
Is summer, summer schooling, is that a required thing for certain students?
No, there is extended school year for special ed students. That's not this summer school that we're talking about. That's typically paid for through federal money, the extended school year. But we have summer school at the elementary school. We've, we've launched summer school over the years. And we have put all of our resources, most recently, this will be, I think, the third summer that this is what we're doing. And it is a pre-kindergarten program for students coming into kindergarten who, when they came to the screening in March or April, or when they show up in August and it's clear that their screening indicates that they could use a little boost before they enter school. So we have about 15 students who come to that. And it's basically to get those kindergarten students ready to enter school and set them off on a better path of success.
And it made all the difference. Mason did that just because he was just emotionally so scared of going to school for some reason. I mean, it was totally transformative. They came with a bus, and it was, I can see that one make a really big difference.
Yeah, it's been very effective. So student staff support includes technology, laboratory counseling, instructional training. We have an increase there, 3.26%. It's mostly in wages and health. We actually have decreased the money that we're allocating for coursework in that morning a little bit. System administration is basically the central office and school board. And there's a slight drop there. And that, sub-changes in health elections that can either increase or decrease the amount there. Somebody chooses, or somebody's spouse all of a sudden gets a family plan and they no longer need our health insurance. And that, our cost will go down. Or if all of a sudden they have a baby, and now they need family insurance, our costs can go up. We are adding a halftime communications and development director in our districts. It's going to be halftime serving both districts. So kind of quarter time for each district. And we're going to see how that works out. We just did interviews for that position, actually.
So applying for grants or?
Applying for grants, some of it. And then just proactive communications. And maybe some other fundraising stuff in addition to grants. But certainly at first, applying for grants.
You would kind of apply for some joint grants for the town if possible?
Yes, there's overlapping needs. We're all there. Sometimes they like to be, if you want to pay for a house, that's a little complex. We're going to open to that conversation. So we also reduced professional development travel in this line. We actually eliminated it. And we have a $25,000 savings in this line because last year we budgeted for lab student equipment that we don't need for next year's budget.
So you don't need any travel for professional development?
Well, we usually do. But we had to try to meet the target sent to us by the school board. And therefore, one of the things we ended up cutting was all the professional development travel in this line.
Maybe we should think about that.
So school administration is basically the principal's offices and the main offices in the schools. That was an increase of 3.33%. Again, it's mostly due to increase in wages, increase in secretary of time at the elementary school. And we also reduced professional development there as well. Transportation, hardly any change at all, just a slight decrease. One of the reasons why that is because last year, we purchased a bus. This year, we're not going to. We are adding one bus monitor as a pilot to ride on an elementary school bus in the afternoon to help the bus driver keep his eyes on the road.
Yeah, that's great.
Yep, so we'll see how that goes. I'm actually amazed it's not a law that there has to be another adult on a bus. We also will have seven additional school days next year that will be a transportation cost because our middle school schedule is going to vary quite a bit from our other schedules.
I have a question about that. We know that's happening because of middle school construction. We need to end school so you can finish the construction for the year. Would that same schedule be the same for Crest and for the high school as well? It's only the middle school that's going to have a different schedule?
Correct.
To transport them somewhere else?
No, for these days. So the middle school is going to have school on seven days that the other two schools don't have school. So we have to get buses and bus drivers for seven extra days in the calendar. And there's, there's a cost to that. And we also had a reduction in our mechanics wages. In our ops and maintenance line, we have a 3.98% increase. That includes moving expenses of $50,000. And that's literally moving out of the old school and into the new school. It includes adding two unisex bathrooms at Crest at the elementary school. We are putting $125,000 into the capital reserve fund within this budget. We also are paying, it's not a big amount, but we are paying for some engineering to happen to look at a secondary egress from the elementary school. That cost is being shared by the high school because we're looking to, we're looking at an engineer, we're going to have an engineering study done to put a road between the elementary and the high school that connects their campuses so that they each will have a secondary egress from their campus. Right now, they each only have one exit. And this also reflects a pretty significant increase in electricity costs. And that's not an increase in electricity usage. It literally is an increase in the cost of electricity. And that's just gone up a lot. We pay capacity charges, and those have increased. So we have a pretty significant increase in those costs. Our debts and other commitments. You can see this is our big line, that is 25% increase over last year. That MET bond payment is $477,316. That'll be our first payment next year. The CRMS payment is increasing by $336,621. And part of the reason for that is, in this year's budget, I don't know if everybody remembers that large meeting we had in the gymnasium last spring, where 600 people came and voted on all of our creative ways to fund the middle school project. Part of that vote was taking that $3 million bond premium. And that vote happened the day before the budget vote. That didn't give us enough time to change the warrant articles and change everything to include the premium in our debt service payment. So this year, we had to pay back part of the interest on that bond premium of $3 million, but we hadn't budgeted for it. So next year, we're budgeting for it. And we also took the principal payment out of, we didn't pay back principal last year. We only paid back interest on our bond because we took that $1.2 million and put it toward the project. So that principal payment's going back in. So this is kind of an adjustment to some things that happened at the last minute last year. But after next year, for both the MET and the middle school project, our, the amount we're paying back in debt service should be on a steady decline from here on out.
Does that number have a full reversal of the premium bond payment that was taken out of destruction, as you say?
We are reversing that.
Right.
And we, we, I will show you where some of that is in here, and some of that we're paying for this year. So we're using this year's board contingency that we didn't have to touch.
So you're taking that 1819?
Some out of 1819, some out of 1920. Yep. We have a decrease in our CRMS project payment. Again, you know, that's going to decrease a little bit every year as we pay that off. And this also includes a kitchen lease for the new middle school. One of the things we did during the value engineering process to save money was we took all the kitchen equipment out of the project and said, we'll just lease it and put it in our regular budget. And there it is. That's the start of it. We have 12-year lease on our new kitchen equipment. And the first year's payment is $18,370.
Fortunately, the lease is, we own it.
Yes, lease to own, yeah. Yeah, we obviously pretty much lease to own.
But 12-year lease is flat?
12, it's 12 years.
12 is a period?
Yeah, not, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if it's flat or not, yet.
Is there any plan for the old kitchen equipment?
We're reusing some of the old kitchen equipment that can be used. And I don't know what's going to happen to the kitchen equipment that's considered obsolete. Our other cost line includes, includes the board contingency and food service subsidy. And that has gone up a very, very large amount, 79%. But this, some people might not be quite follow-up in my conversation. I, last year, remember how I said we voted in that big meeting in the gym, 600 people, and we said, yes, take the $3 million bond premium? The cost of that this year to us was $268,000 that we didn't have time to budget for because the budget vote was the next night. So we had to come up with $268,000 this year to pay the bond premium, interest on the bond premium. Well, we don't have an extra $268,000 kicking around that we can do something like that with. So we have to start figuring out how we're going to deal with that. So what we did was, we used our board contingency. So we budgeted $65,000 every year for board contingency. So this year, we took $65,000 from our board contingency and put that toward it. And then we had to borrow money essentially from the middle school project, which is where we have a huge chunk of change in the bank for the middle school project. It's, it's a middle school expense. So we borrowed $203,000 from the middle school contingency, which we don't want to do because we don't, we're not flush of money in our middle school contingency because we've been very unlucky. And we've run into numerous things to our unsuitable soils that have cost us a lot of money. So our contingency can't absorb that money. So that $203,000 we borrowed, we're planning to pay 75 more back at the end of this year. We put a freeze on our budget this year, about a month ago. We expect to have enough money at the end of the year left over to pay 75,000 more. So now we're down to like 128, I think, that we owe, somewhere close to that. And so in next year's budget, we are going to use the board contingency again. But we don't have to use all of 65,000 of it. But do you see the last line up here? It says increased board contingency by $95,000. So what we did was, when we first went to the board with this budget, we had budgeted what we always budget for health insurance, an estimate of 8%. Our health insurance came in, in the SAD, at 2.4%, which was a savings of $95,260. So we said, okay, we've got this other issue. We've presented the board, I mean, the budget numerous times with 8%. We've got the savings. Let's put that savings into the board contingency so that we can pay back the building contingency next year. And then we'll still have some of our board contingency left over. We'll need to use, you know, I can't remember how much of our board contingency, but we won't have to use all of our board contingency. So that's how we're paying for the bond premium interest payment that we didn't know we were going to have this year. Yep. And then we'll keep our building contingency intact. And we've been able to do it with money that we've been able to save because we had a freeze this year, board contingency money that we didn't need, and our health savings.
When I first saw that line, I thought that was minus the impact.
Yeah, it's a, it's a heightened.
Careful.
Yep.
So what's the process for transferring unextended amounts from one line to another?
So at the end of this year, at a board meeting, we, right, it said a board meeting, we are transferring, so we had a freeze. And so we're going to have money left over in a bunch of different lines.
A freeze in just across the boards?
Across the boards, yep. Except for essential expenditures. So we know we're going to have leftover money in a lot of our lines because of our freeze. We're allowed to transfer up to 5% of the line to a line we over-expended. So we over-expended our debt service line because we had this debt service payment. So we're going to move money from all of our other lines to our debt service line this year, at the end of the year, which will count for what we're expecting to be about $70,000 to $75,000 to put toward that premium. So that's, that's the process by which, our board just has to approve that at a board meeting, transferring the money between the lines.
It's all following up in the 5% threshold. I think it's 10% for the select board, maybe we're, sorry.
Transfer.
Yeah. So like the offering of budget too? So it wasn't like teachers being told not to buy school supplies? And it was like that or maybe a little?
Teachers usually buy all their school supplies in July and August. So if teachers had not bought school supplies or materials by this point, they probably didn't need them. But yes, a budget freeze is, nobody's going to professional development. Nobody is buying any more supplies except for art teachers, science teachers, family consumer science, who's cooking and they have to go to Hamburger and get the ingredients. But everybody else basically makes do. But we're not. The supplies is at least February's. If you went through our schools, I bet we've had 10 years' worth of supplies in all the closets in our schools.
This is the first I can think of.
So this is just a summary of everything I've just gone through, our total expense budget. Those are all the articles that are voted on. And that last column over there shows the change in each article and then the overall change in the expense budget. This table shows the percent of, that each article is out of the total budget. Regular instruction is the highest percentage of our budget. Debt service is the second highest. There's no question our debt service is relatively high. So it'd be nice over the next 20 years to watch that go down. On the revenue side of things, we have a 16% increase in revenues. Most of that came from two areas. The state, we got an increase in our state subsidy. And that's because the state is reimbursing special ed at a higher rate than it did last year. And we have an increase in tuition. And most of that is from that special ed student who's coming to our school. Most of that increase.
What happened to rentals?
Rentals stayed flat.
Oh, no, no, sorry. Where did you saw that? Is that just, is that like leases and?
Yeah, that's the, Montessori and the CSD.
Oh, right.
So the taxpayer impact, just to review the very top table, the increase in expenses was 8.04%. Increase in revenues was 16.04. That led to an overall taxpayer increase of 7.26%. The impact on Camden is a 3.97% increase. And the impact in Rockport is an 11.14% increase. And that is completely due to the student count, which you can see to the right. In 2018, Camden had 391 students in the SAD 28. And in 2019, they're going to have 378. So the number of Camden students is going down. And you can see Rockport's going from 331 to 342. And that is the reason why those differences are where they are with the impact Camden and Rockport.
I always forget that that's part of the equation too.
It's the only part of the equation, Camden and Rockport.
That's the only part.
It's the only part. We're minimum receivers, so it has nothing to do with our valuation. It's solely based on the number of students from each town.
Nothing to do with population or?
No.
Like we may cross all the ways, we don't try to figure out how many people are driving the trash off and just go. It almost seems like, would drive towns to want to keep kids out or? I mean, odd.
Which I don't.
Like, really? So if there were more towns having a few of kids, I don't think it may or would that?
Some other budget information. Our fund balance, the budgetary balance is $1.97 million. And our, I would say the unassigned balance is 102. Most of that is assigned to teacher salaries in case our district folds. Yep.
Can we return to the, did you change the school board allocation when this changes?
Were you talking about up here?
Oh, I forgot. I'm still hung up on the, on the amount that Camden pays versus the amount that Rockport pays. So when, you know, we assign the num, the representation on the school board based on what?
I think that's a population.
Yeah, I think that's a population. Yeah, I think that's a population.
That doesn't change.
That seems really unfair. Should Rockport then get more?
Well, but think about it, look how much it changes every single year. We couldn't be changing the number of Camden and Rockport board members every year.
That makes sense, but it just feels like Rockport, I'm surprised Rockport isn't screaming about this.
Well, they might, we need next week.
Like they should definitely get maybe one more.
But then, also, the taxpayers are the ones that represent the tax, what we said, remain the bill. Because they're also not board representatives. We're board directors.
Right, like Midcoast all the way through that. Huh, always your vote. It's all managers, but.
So our capital reserve, at the end of this year, we're projecting it to be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. At the end of next year, we're projecting it to be three-hundred-and-seventy-five. As I said earlier, we're budgeted to move one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars into the capital reserve. And we're not anticipating spending any of it. And those figures in the capital reserve exclude the money in the capital reserve that was designated for the middle school project. Because we have about one-point-five million dollars in our capital reserve that we had been saving. And if you remember, we had saved one-point-one million dollars. Plus at that meeting with six hundred people in the gym, we added another four-hundred thousand dollars from our capital reserve to go to the project. So that money is in the capital reserve, but it's not as though it's out there for us to spend on other capital needs. So we just aren't including it in there. So we have a capital reserve warrant article authorizing us to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars from unexpendable balances. That's this year. And expend up to two-hundred next year if we need it for emergency purposes. This budget adds a teacher to grade one to maintain class size policy. We added a teacher in grade four based on parent input. We have plans for anticipated spend, we have, we have planned for anticipated expenses in the two building projects that we've got going on. We have nearly eliminated professional development from our administrators. And we have increased the efficiency of our food service operation. So that's what the budget does. What the budget doesn't do is provide for a possible extra kindergarten teacher, which we don't think we're going to need anyways. And we don't plan for adding a preschool program, which for the past few years, at the state level, they've been wanting to move CDS services to the schools and have schools do preschool program. And we just were hedging our bets that that's not going to happen for next fall because we don't even know about it yet, there's no way schools can plan for it. So we didn't put anything in, and that isn't going to happen. But the next year, we may need to do that. And if and when we do that, it will be an added cost for the district.
Does it count?
Because we're minimum receivers.
So is the recent legislation regarding paying for lunches for children from the state affect what's going forward?
Not sure I know about the legislation to pay for lunches for students in the state.
Uh, you just came, just last week, you approved paying for, having to pay for any child that can't afford a lunch at school. School shaming, the, the, the no-shame kids thing.
Oh, yeah, that's, um, that's more about collecting the debt for those kids. Yeah, yeah. No.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
You know, we are, yeah.
Thanks, man.
We are, yeah, we are doing that. Okay, I thought like we're paying for kids. Okay, so that's the SAD budget. Are there any questions on the SAD?
Just.
Uh, two things. Number one, I, in the beginning, you mentioned that you follow the live birth and that it's really keeping some sort of idea of what's going to happen. You mentioned what's going to happen in this upcoming summer. Maybe also keeping track of what we're receiving in the next three or four years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a couple of years past our current incoming kindergarteners, but I need to go get the information again to be that far ahead of the births. But the birth is only part of it. There's not a one-to-one correlation with live births and how many kids we have. Yeah, but it would be really interesting to me that there's a loose correlation. This year, we have the lowest kindergarten registration I think we've ever had. And this year's live births were, you know, I'd say thirty percent below every other year in the past decade for kids who'd be entering kindergarten this year. So there was a significant difference in the live births.
You don't know what happened the year after that?
The year after, it went back to where it's sort of normally been. Which for us is about, you know, sixty-eight to seventy kindergarten students.
I don't know if this is the right time, but I have a son in the middle school. And my wife and I regularly talk about it among ourselves and to the parents. It is extraordinarily wonderful place for a child to get an education. You have to compare it to other friends in other parts of the country. The resources, the, the extras you get are just amazing, so I come home.
I understand. I feel the same way about the elementary school.
And the middle school, actually.
Something's there.
Just a quick question.
I'm just curious about the, what's the starting salary for a teacher?
In our district, next year is forty-one thousand something and change.
And what's the highest you can get?
Next year is eighty-four thousand dollars and change.
And is that based on a combination of longevity and professional?
Yep, it's based on, um, if you've been, you talk about it twenty years in our district and beyond twenty years, if you have a master's degree, it bumps you up. If you have your, a degree beyond a master's, like a second master's or a PhD, you get bumped up another level. And then you have an opportunity to get bumped up one more level if you're a national board serve. So our teachers who are at getting those three humans and they're at the top of the salary are making eighty-four and change next year.
Where are we falling in comparison to other districts nearby in terms of salary?
Our, our teachers, you know, the starting salary, the highest salary, there's variation within the entire scale. But our teachers are between the ninety-third and ninety-fifth percentile statewide.
Do we keep track of the number of kids that live in the district but go to private schools?
Oh, we try to keep track of that. We don't always know. Especially when, you know, we might have some students who have moved here when they were in high school, but they're in private school, we just never had them. So on these, for us, if we have eighth graders who then go to private school, don't enter the high school, we might know that that's happening. But sometimes we don't always know. And likewise, we don't know if a family's here who has never sent their child home. But we do try to keep track.
So it's all just based on the, the ratio of payment is just based on the kids who are actually there at school?
Yes, yep, yep, yep.
So if a huge amount of Camden parents start sending their kids to private school, then Camden has to pay even less?
Well, if.
Even if we've got our parents that have the money to send their kids to private school, it becomes a huge?
Well, the state doesn't help us at all. So if, if we had a mass exodus of students and we didn't change anything else, then, you know, the cost would be the same as it is right now. If we reduce teachers because we didn't need as many because we had a mass exodus, then the cost would go down.
I'm just saying, if, say, Rockport keeps it the same, but then a bunch of Camden, would that reduce Camden's portion?
Yep.
Just as the same.
Yeah, but I don't know if people are conspiring to do things like that. You know, I just think it just sort of.
I don't say so at all, just, I understand the model.
In this, in this one, you'll see that Rockport is a winner at the high school because the number of students from Rockport at the high school age is going down next year. But that's going to change when all these kids in the K-eight system from Rockport hit the high school. So it just varies so much.
The whole idea is supposed to be that you pay for public education no matter whether they're kids or not, so.
Oh, I'll dwell on it. Okay, Miss Jeanette, the high school is a learning community that fosters intellectual and creative excellence while building strong character. The bottom line for the high school budget is, there was an expense, the expense budget, the increase was two-point-eight-nine percent. And the overall impact to the taxpayer is four-point-oh-two percent. And that, the reason why it's higher to taxpayers in this case is because our revenues have gone down a little bit at the high school. Whereas at the SAD, they went up. So it made the taxpayer rate be a little bit better than the budget increase. So our ten-year enrollments at the high school have again stayed pretty steady. You can see kind of an increase there, you know, two thousand and fifteen, then sixteen, then stayed pretty steady. That's really attributable to the number of students we have coming in from St. George. We have, I don't know, thirty-two to thirty-five students in our high school from St. George who are paying tuition.
And so the district, the St. George tax payer paid for that?
Yep.
How much is it per student?
It's set by the law and it's somewhere between ten and eleven thousand dollars per student plus a ten percent debt service fee.
Does that cover our costs?
No, it does not cover our costs. Our costs per student are something like, we're paying seventeen, maybe, per student.
Well.
We are not incurring any new costs because we have these students.
Yep.
If we didn't have the students, our expenses would be the same. So in a way, they are absorbing some of our fixed costs.
Well, and actually, the way that I would put it is, we have not had to lay off high school teachers because we have these St. George students. Because if our numbers were at six-sixty, we wouldn't probably, probably need one fewer teacher at the high school. And the number of students we, every, I, I have calculated, we could, we can absorb about seven-hundred-and-twenty students without having to add staff. Once we have to add staff, then the marginal cost of getting the students in, you know, you've got to play it. So up to seven-hundred-and-twenty, it's, it's essentially all profit for us. And it's enabled us to maintain the status quo of the staffing levels that we currently have. Because they filled in, because you can see, you know, it was seven-sixty-eighty-six back along.
So it's, they're not paying our peripheral costs?
Right.
But it's all revenue because they're seeing a slack.
Yes, yes, and we can absorb them without adding any cost to us.
You mentioned seven-twenty is the number where you start adding things essentially. What's the number where you're overstapped?
I mean, I think the number where we're overstapped is when we're getting down to six-seventy, six-sixty. So our increases over the past ten years for the CSD have hovered around just over two percent. You can see this year's two-point-eight-nine percent and the taxpayer is four-point-oh-two. Something that's really important to point out, and, you know, I, I always want taxpayers to understand this. And that is in two thousand and seventeen, up there on the chart. The change to the taxpayer was negative four-point-five-one percent. That was the relief that we are going to see from the high school's building project ending. The payment, the debt service to the high school building project. We actually aren't going to finish paying for it until November of two thousand and twenty-one. But that year, the state started subsidizing our debt service payment. So we got this influx of cash on the order of seven to eight-hundred thousand dollars from the state, more than we had gotten the previous year. And that's why the taxpayer amount was so low, we had such a big decrease. When we hit November two thousand and twenty-one and make our last payment, it's also going to be the last time we get a subsidy from the state. It's going to be a complete wash, net zero. We're not going to feel anything. So sometimes people think like, oh, when we finish paying off the high school, we're going to feel all this relief. We felt it in two thousand and seventeen.
Good point.
Yep, we're just not going to feel anything.
I need more apparel to go for that. But there it is, two thousand and seventeen.
The debt service up here includes Midcoast college. How does that allocation work on most of the terms?
We pay the, it's by the port, the number of students who attend the high school. So we pay a proportional amount. And we happen to pay like thirty-six to thirty-seven percent of the cost. So that's the cost to operate it, the amount that we're responsible for, and that percentage of the debt service.
Right, but it's the sum total of students in eleven, three high schools and the island schools and our percentage of those students. These do many juniors and seniors, but it's all four years now.
And all the times?
Uh, all, yeah. McDonald's, Oceanside, Tetea, Jezus, right, the island schools are all, all high schools in seven.
And that's fixed duration of the bond payments?
What's that?
That fixed ratio will be through?
No, it changes every year.
It's a plus or minus a little bit, but it'll still be this order of magnitude for it.
It, well, it'll, it'll go down a little bit each year, but they have, I'm pretty sure they have a twenty-year bond on theirs as well, so.
So nothing to do with the number, with the amount, number of students from each town that actually attend?
Correct.
Marie, do you want to mention though that we got hit with that, our portion of that bond payment? At the same time, the state changed the reimbursement?
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, so when, um, you know, our bill historically to Midcoast to pay for the costs has been one-point-one million dollars. So we've been chugging along around a million dollars a year going to Midcoast for their operating costs. And the state decides to change the way they were funding CTE centers. And they were just going to pay for the costs upfront. And so like, schools like us weren't going to have to pay for those operating costs. So the year they decided to do that, very fortuitously, was also the year that we started having to pay the bond payment. So this, we, now our payment, that, this coming year is like sixty-seven thousand dollars instead of one-point-one million. But our share of the bond payment is like eight-hundred thousand dollars. So that was a really close thing that happened the same year. So there wasn't a huge impact in our budget, but huge changes occurred and they just happened to occur simultaneously. So instead of paying for their operating costs, now we're paying for the debt. Thank God we're not paying for both.
Could that, I mean, would that just be a legislative change? Should we, you'll be looking out for a change again or?
I mean, it is legislation, I don't think it's going to change again. Nobody's talking about it.
No one's talking about it, but it's only going to take somebody else.
Let's not bring it up.
No, but I mean.
That's what I've been referring to, that's the question.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's much more equitable way to do it because there have been districts, most districts around the state have not been paying CTE costs. Because many CTE centers are, like Stanford, has one at the Stanford High School. So the subsidy that goes to Stanford includes the CTE center. So none of the sending schools have to pay any money because the state already subsidized their program. We were in a rare situation of having to pay a lot of money. And so that has made it a lot more equitable around the state in terms of sharing those costs and having the state just pay multiple.
What is the board ownership for, like for technology, how does that work?
Each sending town gets a certain number of seats at the table based on their population. So we have four seats at the table.
Weighted seats. And then there are weighted, based weighted votes.
So the number of seats that later, the weight change is based on bottom of the chart?
So that's how they deal with that fluctuation issue?
But we, we pay, the high school pays a third of their costs, yet we don't have a third of the seats or a third of the weight. It's.
A third of the population?
Well, what I'm saying is, the board, the board is like thirteen member board or something like that. And we have four seats, but we don't have one-third of the seats. We have four thirteens of the seats, but we pay a one-third of the cost.
But then how, the, so you have different numbers of seats and a weighted system that they both kind of?
Each seat, depending on who you are, it's a different weight. So our four votes have the same weight, but Rockland's five votes or, or our two, the two votes have a different weight.
So they have five seats at the table?
I believe so.
And I have no idea how they decided Rockland got five seats, we have four seats.
It's usually either or, like the Midcoast all the ways, we just do two from each town, but then we weight those votes, but.
It would be great to change it, but everybody has to mutually agree to change it.
That's what happens with the state.
Yeah, it's really difficult to change.
Wow.
So CSD, regular instruction, just about a five percent increase. This includes your salaries, health benefits, those sorts of things. The biggest change in this is the innovation center that we're starting at the high school next year called the Hatchery. We are funding that partly by reallocating some resources that currently exist and partly by increasing this line in the budget. And then we have our wage increases. And in this district, um, health increases were budgeted at seven percent. But they came in lower, zero? Zero, but this budget was passed before we got our health numbers. So we had already budgeted there. So we'll have a little, a little, little breathing room in the high school budget next year because of that. That'll probably just be left over and go to the fund balance at the end of the year. So the Hatchery is an innovation center that includes a number of things. It's going to include coursework and a partnership with a school in Cambridge. And that partnership will include a full-time innovation coach, professional development networks and other resources for us. We will have a maker space at the high school. We're going to redesign industrial arts space into a maker. We're going to redesign industrial arts space into a maker space. And we are going to work hard to integrate what we're doing with the community. And probably not next year, but the year after, we hope to host some cafe nights and a speaker series. As well as a lot of other things that will be happening in the Hatchery.
What's the school in Cambridge department?
It's called, it's up there in the, by the coursework, it's called NUVU, N-U-V-U.
It's a public school, it's a private school in Cambridge.
And their entire curriculum is an innovation curriculum. They do nothing except for innovation for their high school curriculum. And they have partnerships with schools around the world. Most partnerships are with private schools, some are with public schools. The closest one to us is Woodstock, Vermont, where they have a partnership with them.
Isn't it all project-based learning?
Yep, yep. So we are using half of the open media position to fund part of the innovation coach. So as I say, we're using part of our current resources and some new resources. So again, you know, we have a budget that we're trying to come in on a target for the school board. And the way we could make everything work was to use half of that position. We intend to bring that position back to full-time in the following year's budget. We will also be applying for grant funding, that new communications and development director. The first thing will be to start applying for grant funding for all of the costs for our, for the Hatchery. So some of the things that we budgeted for this year, I'm hoping we can actually get some grant funding for, which would be great help. Plus we have things we didn't budget for. We want to renovate the industrial arts space and build a second story on half of the space to be a classroom and maybe a little bit of a co-working space and an event space. And we're going to apply for grant funding to do that renovation, but we're going to include everything we're doing in the grant. And I believe that there is a lot of money out there for innovation in education and a lot of people are not doing what we're doing. I'm really hopeful that we're going to get money for this.
Will all students participate in the Hatchery?
So there, the course, we're offering a course in the fall that has a limit of fifteen students, it's open to any student. And it's actually a dual enrollment course with you may or no. One of our teachers, one of them was trained to, we're teaching the introduction to innovation engineering course that or no teachers in the foster innovation center. And so there are fifteen students who can sign up for that. Then we've got the maker space that is going to offer mini-courses for students to come learn how to use a 3D printer or laser cutter, all the equipment that's in there, so that students will be able to come in anytime they want, if they have a study hall, to come and use the space. We're also going to offer a second course, second semester. The new, the coach coming up from NUVU will run this studio course with our teacher who's running the maker space. And so we'll have that course, second semester, that will be all projects, innovation projects that students will do. Then the following year, we intend to offer a couple more courses so more students can participate. But we really, and then that coach will work with teachers in core content areas. So they might work with an art teacher or a science teacher. If that teacher is interested in incorporating innovation into their current curriculum. So that it could reach students through their regular coursework as well. So they can either take a course in the Hatchery, be in a course that is using the Hatchery and trying to implement and integrate some innovation things, but they can also just go to the Hatchery and to the maker space. And then we'll have events that will be open to anyone. So we're really trying to make that available as much as we can to any student who's interested.
Of course, we have so many problems that come up in town-related things that, like, are they going to be doing things with designing bridges? Or would there be any, I feel like there's just like this long list of places in the town that we don't get to because it's like somebody needs to research it or somebody needs to come up with an idea for our recycling problem or would?
Yeah, I mean, my guess is it would be things like that require an engineering degree to do, but we have to make that. I met with all of the town managers recently to share with them what we're doing in the Hatchery. So that they're aware of what we're doing and to try to collaborate as best we can. And Audrey did mention that there are a lot of times that the town has some issues that are perplexing them, although it might require some creative solutions to. And we have talked about how we might be able to partner and what that might look like in different ways. And that was the purpose of having that meeting, to make the town managers aware that we're doing this thing. We want to collaborate with the towns and with the community and we don't know exactly what that might look like. But that would just partly be about communication and having ideas and figuring out how to connect students.
And tons of grant applications that become so much more competitive as soon as they have a component that's, you know, an education component or a, you know, community outreach.
So special education is increasing almost nine percent. We have a private tuition payment of thirty-five thousand dollars that wasn't in this year's budget. We are reducing our contingency by twenty thousand dollars. We are, again, in this district, it takes something out of local entitlement and put it into the regular budget. And that's tutor rewards with the ZENUS program and we have our regular increases in wages and health. Midcoast program assessment, you can see there's only been a five thousand dollar increase because the amount we're paying is so low, sixty-seven thousand dollars next year. And that's the cost of Midcoast above the EPS formula that's our share. Other instruction that includes cultural体育 athletic summer school is an increase of five percent. That's mostly due to stipend wage increases and an increase in some of the officiating for athletic events. Student staff support actually went down a little bit. We had a reduction in part of the cost because of health insurance election option. We have reduced lease payments, reduction in non-lease purchases. We're just not buying as many computers as we did last year. Um, we have also an equity initiative that is, you know, a small part of our budget, but it's an important thing we're doing. And this is one of the places where it appears in our budget. And that is we're paying for our sophomores to take the PSAT next year to try to level the playing field. So that all of our students have had the opportunity to take a practice test before they have to sit for the SAT. And as you know, all of our students have to take the SAT because it's the main state test and it's an important test for students. Some of our kids have the opportunity to take it ahead of time because the PSAT is optional. And sometimes the cost of the PSAT is an obstacle for people, so we're just paying, we're putting in our budget to pay for our sophomores to take that next year.
How much is it to take the test?
I can't remember.
Fifty bucks.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You didn't realize that was something you have to pay for. I'm sure that's an obstacle for some people.
System administration is an increase of seven point three percent. Again, wage and benefit increases. And we're adding that quarter of the full-time position in this district as well for that director of development and communications. School administration is a four percent increase, mostly wages and benefits, health insurance choices. Transportation is flat. We just did our contract for transportation and there's no increase in it next year. Ops and maintenance, barely an increase, just point three percent. Again, we do have higher electricity costs, but we have a reduction in our capital and our contract repairs. We're going to add seventy-five thousand to the capital reserve, but we're also going to ask to spend fifty thousand, so it's only a net gain of twenty-five. And the last one really isn't much of a budget increase. That was just a different way we're going to cover substitutes for the students. Our debts and other commitments has gone down by three point nine four percent. So we had a decrease in our CTE debt service. Every single year we'll have a decrease in that. And we had a decrease in the interest payment for the high school. In fact, it was our last interest payment was this year. Next year, we have no interest left, we're only paying principal. A hundred percent of the principal payment is being subsidized by the state. So when that ends, there should be no big sigh of relief. Other costs increased twelve point three three percent. And this is another equity initiative that we're doing. We are going to provide free lunch for students who are on reduced lunch, free lunch and breakfast. We're also, you know, another part of our equity initiative that isn't showing up in our budget because we're paying for it with external funds. Is we're going to have a room next year available for students at the high school to get food. Like we have a backpack program at the younger grades. We're going to have a room at the high school that students can go to food if they want after school without having to pay for it. And they can get food on a Friday afternoon to take home for the weekend if they want. So it'll just be available for students to go and access as they.
Anyone, not just?
Anybody.
Kids on for your.
Anybody, yep. And this is a summary of everything that I just went through that shows that total overall increase of two point eight nine percent. And the next slide is the percent of the total budget. In this district, debt service is thirteen percent and SAD is twenty-four percent. So it's quite a bit higher in the SAD because we are carrying a lot more debt there. In general, our two districts are carrying quite a bit more than the average school carries for debt service. Twenty years old building. Our revenue lines have gone down a little bit, two point five one percent. And that is mostly due to a reduction in state subsidy because we've had, we have less debt to pay. And a slight reduction in our tuition revenues. Taxpayer impact, again, the overall impact is four point oh two percent. So you can see we did have that decrease in revenues. It impacts the towns stiffly. In Camden and Rockport, it is based on the number of students attending the high school as a relative proportion of the other towns. So you can see Rockports is going down less than Camden's, I mean, going up, less than Camden's. Because the next year at the high school, there are just more, there's an increase in the Camden students relative to the Rockport students. And we know that that's not going to last forever because we've got so many Rockport students at the elementary level. When in Lincolnville, their increase or decrease is based on their property values.
Total valuation?
Yep, the last year's compared to this year's. And so Appleton had had a pretty big increase the past couple of years. And fortunately for them, they're getting a decrease in their budget for next year. And the other towns are getting, you know, everyone else around five percent.
Hold on, so that's, if that's not a decrease in your budget, it's not in the amount that is being assessed to them, is?
The, their, Appleton, Appleton's assessment from the five-town CSD goes down fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. So for the median single-family home, their assessment from the high school will be nineteen dollars and twenty-six cents less than it was this year.
But that's taking into consideration all the valuation stuff from the town, it's not, it's not.
That's just charging them less. That's the CSD's budget. Their, the town has other expenses, their municipal budget, their K-8 budget. So I don't know, the overall tax impact to an Appleton citizen from all of the things that impact his budget. But from the five-town CSD, they have to pay less for the high school in the coming year than they did for this year.
And it's based on other than the number of students.
It's based on the town's valuation.
I thought the fiscal had a combination of both. It is, they're different than us because of subsidy.
Well, no, J C and I looked really closely at what subsidy was given, provided to us from every town. And in Hope, Appleton, Lincolnville, it was, came directly from their valuation numbers. And the other two towns came only from the population numbers.
The town is not coming.
Not, not in Hope, Appleton, Lincolnville.
Learn something after ten years of being in the forest.
I know.
I just told that.
I know, I know. We uncovered that. But again, we don't decide that, that comes from the state.
So if one bar, a Camden or Rockport.
Okay, the state's used that statement.
If Camden or Rockport's valuation were to plummet for some reason, then that might put one town or the other into a non, non-receiver category, which will push us into the valuation calculation rather than the.
Yes, that's so unlikely though.
We're in total, then, to the taxpayer Camden, they're looking at approximately about forty-one dollars on a hundred thousand dollar valuation total for both districts.
Oh, for both districts, yeah.
Or do I think my way, if that means a forty-one cent increase in ability?
Yep. Due to the schools.
So.
Well, this is, that's not what we're just talking about for us, based on both.
Just Camden, just Camden.
For both the high school and the.
Both, both the CSD and the SAD, but maybe about, uh, it's going to vary a little because I think our overlays are going to be a little bigger than what they use in this report. One-two-nine-nine is probably a little over all stuff and not casually enough to dance on the screen about, uh, attention to do sense.
I'm going to be too tired to talk about our own budget at the end of this.
So the level of the fund balance at the high school is one point two million dollars. There's actually only fourteen thousand dollars that's unassigned at the high school. And the capital reserve at the high school is healthy, it's five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. At the end of next year, we expect it to be six hundred thousand dollars. High school is twenty years old and we are expecting that we will start hitting some major repairs that need to happen. So we're probably losing some of that money in the coming years. We do have capital reserve, more an article in the high school that does include specifics. Twenty-five thousand dollars for an engineering services heat recovery study. And twenty-five thousand dollars to renovate the maker space, the industrial arts room. Some minor changes down there to make it into a maker space.
What kind of heat recovery?
Um, just as an engineering study to look at whether or not we can recover heat from our ventilation system to save money long-term.
Cool.
Actually, we are.
I'm writing M T right now.
I started recovering it, it's small, that's what I did.
The adult ed budget, you know, is relatively speaking, quite a bit smaller than the rest of our budgets. Total expenses are four hundred and seven thousand dollars next year, just going to slightly increase of eight percent. Some increase in instructional hours, changes in health insurance costs. On the revenue side, same thing, the revenues match the expenses. Actually, we got an increase in our state subsidy for adult ed, so the, um, what we need to collect from each town is actually going down there. We see the town for adult ed next year. Because our subsidy will not, will not to offset that. And this budget supports the opening of the Hatchery while balancing other priorities. We use existing resources and add some new ones for the Hatchery. We fund some equity initiatives and we efficiently anticipate needs in technology and facilities. What this budget doesn't do is we don't fully fund the media position for next year, but the plans to build it back up to full-time in the following year. Our next steps, I actually did update this slide. So down at the bottom is really the only thing that's relevant. The town budget hearing for approval of this article by article is on May twenty-first. Six o'clock for the SAD and seven o'clock for the CSD at the Strong Auditorium. And then the town vote on the overall budget will be on June eleventh. Any other questions?
Couple of general ones, um, just because to the same, um, thing we discussed with the, when we had workshop with the library. And annually, we get information from the library on their budgetary departments and we work on arrangement between two. We talked to them about, in the time of the pandemic, we're trying hard to look at forecasts, not just looking out the rearview of the car. Does the school, you and school board look at budgeting forecasts out beyond the next fiscal year?
Yes, I don't know how detailed you might be thinking of.
Well, it's like.
We don't do formal forecasts.
Not specific, not specific, but you, you have a baseline budget, say nineteen point, the, uh, point, this coming one. We do too, but we know that there are certain things that are flat, and I was only speaking to, you know, labor and water, something in the inflation rate. But there are special ups and downs to forecast in the coming years, like you mentioned, if there were a debt service falling out of, not happening, with the explanation about the high school. But if there were, that, those things would be forecast out of, which, trying to fundamentally do the best we can to manage for taxes, but as you are also. And of course, especially this budget, it's sixty-some percent of the overall town cost to taxpayer. So that may not be a specific answer for, but the dialogue between us on looking forward would really be helpful. So that may not be a specific answer for, but the dialogue between us on looking forward would really be helpful. But to, so we know where, there may be significant, nothing ever goes down in the regular valley. But, you know, the ready process along the road, we need to be considering as we look forward to, you know, the next three to five years in the time of Camden.
Yeah, certainly, three to five years. For us, the answer is no, except at the high school, if they have some major tutorial blows up or something because it's twenty one years old. But we've got our capital reserve fund that we're building for that purpose. But really, in the, for the school budgets, we can see most of our costs. We don't anticipate major increases in our student populations. We hope to keep them steady. And we have high debt service in all of the, in all, both our districts. High debt service goes to Midcoast and the CSD, that's only going to go down over time. And high debt service in the SAD because we're still paying off the elementary school. We've got the middle school, we've got the M E T building. And all of those things are going to be going down over time. So as we look ahead, we're, we have fairly new facilities. We have a decreasing debt service. If we have a fairly steady population, really the only unexpected kinds of costs are major capital calamities, which we are trying to prevent from any significant changes in our budget by having the capital reserve fund. So, you know, we have sometimes new initiatives like the hatchery. But we have really worked hard to keep that expense as low as we can. And, you know, I, I don't think, I mean, we have no things, no big bridges that are crumbling that we have to figure out how we're going to rebuild them. We've got schools that we have recently rebuilt. So I'm feeling like the school budgets are going to be pretty steady and stay their course.
Basically.
I mean, I'm thinking, you know.
I'll go there.
I know. I don't see, primary numbers.
Okay, that's good.
How about, how about the elementary school and the, the older car stop with the siding and the roof? I don't, I don't approve, but.
Yeah, I think we replaced the roof recently in the, in the old monastery building. But we, I mean, we've been taking care of it as we will.
Putting money aside, even if we do that kind of work. You know, if you look at that ten year thing, we don't expect that ten year thing to be anything different than what it is, which is mostly zero to two and a half percent increases.
Yeah, that's a question.
And there are things that are just totally beyond our control. We could have, you know, Microsoft could open their second headquarters here and we'll have a population boom. Which, like, so when we met last, we had a population, you know, inflation, right? That kind of threw school through a loop and then kind of had to deal with that economy crash or to deal with that. But assuming things not beyond our control, you'll see what we saw the last ten years.
Yeah.
Which is basically.
That's a right space.
Play sharing.
Yeah.
Number.
Yep.
Another question I have, just a general one, in fact, nothing much. Do you track or does it track cost per student between us and other communities?
We compare them.
What do you compare?
Um, you know, we're, we're one of the higher ones in the state for cost per student. And one of the reasons, in addition to offering exceptional education, is that we have high debt service. And then that goes into the overall cost of educating students. We have higher debt service than most districts.
Because it's still a premium school.
Because we have new facilities in Midcoast, is like a fourth new facility for us. So we, you know, again, like I think in, you know, come back and ask that question in twenty years and we'll probably be pretty competitive and our debt service is close to nothing. So, you know. Right, right now, it is relatively high for both of those reasons.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, thanks, Greg. Okay, on to the next one, two.
I think we should have our practice. I don't think it's too dead here.
So what? Dave, Dave, okay, get out of here. Yes, we will take, we will take a five minute break, please. So everybody, leave or whatever.
I gotta have some water. I didn't want to open my bottom.
I know, every time I keep.
I sit on a desk, the bottom, oh, no. Makes special noise.
Is that you clicking away if I'm here?
Yeah, click, yes, you can.
We got blocked out. I just wanted to get a pen while I could, because she didn't come with me. What is that?
All right, now, generally, good, let's get back on our agenda, please. And we're going to make a switch, just going to bring up the, uh, re-specion on, uh, the recapture of the wastewater treatment plant.
So I'll, I'll kind of.
Am I supposed to put this?
Oh, yes, please. We don't have to do it right away. Kind of leave it a little bit later. But I guess I'll kind of start this off with, um, a little bit on the background of the wastewater treatment plant project. When we got approval from the voters to, um, borrow thirteen point nine million dollars to do a project, uh, we started looking at what our financing options were. And the best option seemed to be the USDA World Development Program for wastewater. And one of the major reasons why that, that program was so appealing is because there's a grant component of it. So in addition to receiving, you know, loan funds for your project, you also receive grant money or you, you can be eligible to receive grant money depending on a number of factors. And when the project was first voted on at thirteen point nine million, that's kind of, we, we just had very preliminary cost estimates on the wastewater treatment plant upgrades as well as some of the collection system projects, like the force main that runs under the harbor from C Street to Bayview. And as we started looking at some of these components more, we realized that if we wanted to do everything that we first talked about, it's more like a fifteen point one million dollar project. So when we started talking with USDA more about this, you know, potential for grants, that looked like a good option to get all the different components of the project that we needed accomplished to be done. If we look at borrowing the thirteen point nine million and then grant funding that we could receive on top of that. Um, so as we got through the process a little bit more with USDA, they realized that the, as a town, had been doing something that's quite unique when you compare us to other towns that have wastewater departments. In that the town had historically been paying one hundred percent of the cost of the debt service on capital projects. And most towns that have, you know, wastewater department, the town typically borrows the money on behalf of the department. And then the department through, you know, user rates would reimburse the town for the cost of that borrowing. And we haven't historically done that. And, um, we looked into it a little bit more and that's, that's critically important because the way that USDA World Development awards their grants is by looking at what is the likely impact on user rates going to be and trying to stabilize that impact. And that's why they award grant money. So if we were to go down the path that we always had gone down, where taxpayers bore one hundred percent of the cost of, you know, the capital projects, we wouldn't be eligible for any grant funds, which means the town could leave about one to one point five million dollars on the table because that is, this is the likely sort of range of grant that we would be looking at. So we started looking at, well, how would this actually impact user rates if it weren't an expense borne by the taxpayers and instead was passed on to users through R I S? And one of the things we wanted to look at is how do we compare to, oh, pretty much all the other municipalities that have wastewater departments? So if you look at this graph up here, this is a survey that Main Rural Water does, is it Main Rural Water?
Yes.
Yep, so they surveyed to try to figure out, you know, what are the average charges across all the different, you know, wastewater, wastewater departments and programs in the state? And if you look at the little, the little, um, purple bar, that's us compared to all the other blue bars. So that's Camden and that's how we compare in terms of what we charge for wastewater compared to pretty much all the other towns in the state that did the survey in twenty sixteen. And I think Dave Bolsterich left, he excluded some, like a lot of the more rural towns in northern Maine where they're, they probably wouldn't even be on this chart because their costs are so high.
How does eight thousand cubic feet generally run around on annual?
Yeah, what Main Rural Water tries to do is, uh, there's different towns have different ways to charge fees. So there might be two or three different fees. So to normalize everything, they, they picked eight thousand cubic feet, which is roughly what a household uses in a year. To give the annual taste of that. I will say the, uh, we're, the proposed, uh, line is over forty eight dollars per year more than it should be. Found that, uh, that was, calculated a little bit off.
Wait, it should be down to forty?
No, the next one.
The dollar bar.
Yeah, that's seven twenty, that should be six.
Eight.
Uh, seven ten, it should be six seventy. Yeah.
So the proposed, that is theoretically if we put the entire, um, the cost of the treatment plant upgrades and paid for it through user rates instead of it being borne by taxpayers. And why I think this is important to see is that Camden is a really great, like, an incredible deal when you compare us to all of the other, you know, towns in Maine right now that charge for wastewater. And even if you included the cost of the debt service for the treatment plant upgrades, sorry, treatment plant upgrades in the user rates, we're still a pretty good deal. Um, so that's, that's, and just for perspective, so you know what we're talking about in terms of numbers, it would be a forty eight percent increase in, um, in user rates. And so for the average annual user, what did we calculate? It would go from about, what is it now, for the average user?
Hold on, is that forty eight percent with the old number or the number that Dave said?
Um, that is with the.
Six seventy.
Twenty.
Yeah, that's with the old number, sorry.
These like.
No, no, that's with the new number, the forty eight's with the.
Six seventy.
Yep.
Yeah, six seventy would be the new number. Annual.
So that's exactly that's forty eight percent.
Right, exactly.
So that really means that we would be at par with, say, in the Dunkwood or Kinnabaugh?
Yeah.
Right. Something there.
Right, so that's just to give you a little context on what that would look like. So for, do you remember what the cost was for the average?
Well, I don't have the average, uh, minimum charge.
Oh, sorry, minimum charge.
Yeah, minimum charge is, uh, fifty seven dollars, it's a change right now. And that would go up to, uh, right around eighty dollars.
Yep.
That's per, per quarter, per quarter, right.
So twenty dollars. Right.
But then we could also, so there is, there would also be an option of changing the way that we do the minimum charges, right?
We, we could, we could.
Restructure.
Stock hold that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the towns do that, uh.
Wanted to further.
Yeah, change the, the way they, uh, they have a separate minimum charge, say, you know, you get some people that are on fixed incomes that, uh, you know, that moves.
Sure, sure.
If you have that separately.
And to give you an idea, on the other end of the spectrum, Midco Solid Waste is the single biggest customer. That's fair enough to say, right?
I believe so.
The single biggest customer, so I believe that they're paying about a hundred and one thousand dollars a year in R I S.
Well, yeah.
I mean, it fluctuates, but we base it on this.
But hopefully not that much this year.
Right, we based it on this past year. And if you were to kind of look at what they've been charged this year and what the rate, you know, increase would do to them, it would be about a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars a year. So that's on the opposite end of the scale of your minimum charge, actually. Yes.
And we take a good chunk of that ourselves here in Camden.
We take. Funded on the bottom line, if, if you want to get one or two million dollars of, of grant money in the interest.
Exactly, exactly. But, yeah.
So essentially, we're, users that are on septic, who are not part of the system, who would be otherwise paying for the upgrade through taxes, would no longer be on the hook for something that they don't use.
Correct, it would be users.
A better deal. And the argument has always been that really it's a collective benefit for the community that anybody that comes downtown or doesn't, or, you know, we all do rely on this system. And we want to help it downtown or, so.
Right.
It's a pretty big change. It will be a big hit for a few different businesses.
Let, let me ask a question. We make that change now, we have to do that to get the grant?
Yes, we have to do this.
So you ran.
Yeah.
There was, at a point in the future, could we move back if we wanted to?
Um, it would have to be, no, no, because we'd be audited, we'd be subject to a single audit every year, so we could do that.
Change, it's going to be a problem to change that.
Right, I mean, the way.
But it is the way.
I don't want to, I don't want to talk out loud about how we could do it, because I guess.
But it is, but it is the way that every other town faces.
Yes, it is, so it's so odd, the way that we've done it in the past, that it was, it wasn't even something that when we were first talking with USDA, they even considered was a possibility. So they told us, okay, well, this is what your loan amount would be, this is what your likely grant would be, and this is how it would go. And they didn't, you know, they didn't even consider the fact that there's anyone funding their capital upgrades like this. So that wasn't, you know, they had to go back and readjust everything because it's so outside of what they normally do in terms of deals with municipalities.
The other, the other thing, even with the raise in wastewater rates, there still would be, it would be huge, but there would be a little bit of savings in property there.
Yes, a big savings. A big savings.
I mean, I don't know, but, but now, I expect a section of the mill rate.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're looking at like about fifty cents on the mill rate.
If we're paying taxes, yeah.
Yes.
If, if we build this route with the, maybe to rate payers, there's no net up or down to tax.
Right. And we're out. And also, and we're going to have to make cut, frankly, we're going to have to make cuts to the project as well. Or, or have Rockport pay upfront, like the whole lump sum of their portion of this project upfront to make it workable. So those are going to be our options, make cuts, make Rockport pay for their portion upfront. There's, yeah, there's going to be, it just makes the project much more untenable if we try to fund it through taxes because we're leaving a lot of money on the table in grants.
Aside from the, I was going to say, aside from the obvious factor of being eligible for a grant, I think, given the fact that it's, it's a utility, philosophically, it makes sense to be, to be putting the cost of users, the more you use the utility, the more you pay, unless you use it, unless you pay. Unlike schools, we all pay for schools and it shouldn't be that way. I think utilities are different.
It makes sense that we were, and thought about how this happens.
And I think you all had the opportunity to read the, um, the letter that, um, the town attorney provided in regards to this. And it was kind of like, this was sort of an over, like, just an oversight or a way that things started being done over the years. And because the way that he kind of explained it is, it's, it's like, of course, the utility would pay for this cost. The town is only borrowing on behalf of the utility, so.
A national head of government jurisdiction, utilities, general water, sewer.
Yes.
The alternative, though, is, I'm sorry, I'm making up. If you were there, kept it the way it was, then the people that are on septic systems could ask the town to rebuild their septic systems when they need to be rebuilt. Because that would be fair.
Good drive. Mark, are you on septic?
Yes.
Same here, Mark.
Well, just not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanted this to pop up before we even entertained the whole upgrade discussion, that we should look at our sewer ordinance and push towards this. I was never able to get anybody to, even like the public, a whole room full of people saying, don't you think we should pushing it to users? And no, everyone's like, no, I think we should all pay. Um, so I was dumb, dumb, I felt uncomfortable with just changing it after the vote because it was very much sold to the taxpayers as, or the residents and everybody. Like, this is going to be shared equally and now we are going to be changing it. I, I mean, I guess Bill says we can do it and that as wastewater commissioners, we have this authority. I don't think it's an authority that we recognize that we had.
I don't think it's an authority that we recognize that we had when we put it out to voters and told them how the whole thing would work. So we definitely need to go through the motions of public input and hearings and. Yeah, and I would, I'd recommend you have a public hearing. There is some urgency to this because we've been able to secure a poverty interest rate at a very low rate, and that's subject to change. So we want to get in under that, this financial year.
How we can see the number of speakers.
Should we schedule a public hearing next select board?
I'd say next select board meeting, schedule the public hearing and then actually hold the vote on what you want to do. It also gives you more time if you all don't feel like you have all the information tonight to come to myself, Jody, David Bolstrich, and ask more questions and get more. I mean, this is the one area where you function very much like a city council and you have the ability to make a decision.
You need a motion, huh?
No, no, we scheduled a set for.
Do you want to make a motion or set a public hearing?
Well, we just have to put the agenda and set a public hearing next gen.
No, I thought we were going to set it now.
Set it now.
For next time, yeah.
For May twenty-first.
Is it better?
Yes.
I think we need to get it out. I'll make sure that the next one, the next one, which is May twenty-first.
Second. This one's better done.
Thank you.
No, no, you're not going to.
We'll be gone. If they know this, like, we're approval, but it's going to take a little bit more room to inland waters in downtown to sign the agenda by discussion. So, Paul, you want to lead into it here, or do you have?
Um, yeah, I'll start.
Paul, what's going on?
Good evening, folks. The inland mooring working group, we've met a few times. We have seven people on the board. There are people that are represented from the rowing club. We have mooring owners are on the board, are on the group, as well as folks that own shorefront property on the lake there. We've identified existing problems and perhaps more importantly, we've discussed and identified potential future problems and look at where those might occur in future years. The group is in agreement that some form of regulations needed, and we discussed amendments to the harbor ordinance or the shorefront, shoreline zoning, and we feel a scandal in the ordinance would be probably the best way to move forward on this. We've looked at other towns' ordinances, we've talked with state, other towns' harbor masters, and we've talked with Steve Fixley on stuff that goes on here in town. We've looked at restricting our efforts to beguise the lake. That's where we've had some demonstrated problems, and we don't feel at this time that, that needs, anything needs to be expanded towards other inland waters. If in the future problems crop up, anything that ended up getting approved by the town could easily be amended to expand to other waters. We have met and reviewed and commented on first draft of an ordinance. The basic structure of that ordinance loosely follows the harbor ordinance in terms of its organization. But sort of the guts bit, it comes from the town of Harrison. They have a very simple, common sense ordinance that the state recommended we look at, as well as, I believe they have also been in court and it's been upheld. So that's always nice. I think I can speak for the group that our initial first draft needs to be simplified and concentrate only on mooring use. When we start looking at the organization of the, the existing harbor ordinance, there's a lot of other stuff in there, and much of that is already covered by state law on inland waters. So take out that stuff, just concentrate on the mooring use stuff, and as we say, hopefully drop this thing down to, you know, three, four, five pages. And we're also gathering a list of questions for Jeremy and Bill. Things that sort of, we really don't know if there's stuff that can be done or should be done, that sort of thing moving forward. Upcoming stuff is reach consensus on, on a draft ordinance. One big item is draw and describe common mooring area or areas, looking at that. And have Jeremy and Bill review what we come up with and then comment on that, change it if we need to, and then present it to the board. That's where we're at. In terms of timeframe, I would think that we could probably have something in for review to you guys by June here, so.
Paul, you want to mention where, when Minville's doing this in Camden, independently of us, on their portion of government, where they're at?
And I, I go to their meetings as well. They have structured their proposed ordinance after the town of Harrison's as well. They have taken it to the town manager and he's reviewed it. And they'll be, their select board will be looking at the draft ordinance coming up and have questions. It has to go to the town attorney as well. One big difference that they have is currently they are not planning on having a common mooring area designated. They have very little town-owned shorefront property. Most of that is at Briesmer Park at the head of Norton Pond. And there's already way too much stuff going on on that little beach property. They've got a boat ramp, a swim beach, and a number of moorings right now already out there. And so the committee really felt that adding stuff out there, in a perfect world, you'd have all that stuff separated anyway. They just didn't feel that. What they do expect to have is if a non-shorefront owner wants to have a mooring, then the inland harbor master will look around, try to find a place to put it. So taking into account access and speaking in front of someone's dock, that sort of thing. And that may well be out like from one hundred feet to two hundred feet out in that no wait zone as opposed to closer to shore. Questions?
Sounds like a really good committee, a lot of good work there.
What level of staff interaction or review has happened at this point?
I'll try to talk very briefly about it last week. The, and we mentioned, we talked to the committee about, you know, what, should the, should an ordinance all let it go through? What's the, you know, what's the burden on town staff? I think in the, I feel like I'm straying, but in terms, in terms of registration essentially, for the common mooring areas, not shorefront owners, you know, I think that we talked about essentially a first kind of first serve basis and a list similar, not similar, but how we do it in the harbor now. And enforced on a complaint-only basis, we don't need to have somebody out there in the inland mooring harbor police. We talked about Dale Doherty, who's already out there at access, has the means. I'll try to talk very briefly about whether or not sending him to get sort of close to the harbor master makes sense. Perhaps it becomes a, a special provision, but I don't know. What liability does the town have for not including regulations in this?
Well, we already contract with them to do a certain amount of work. So I guess if they become an inland harbor master, you know, that would kind of.
There's actually some kind of coverage.
Yeah, we have to cover them under our insurance policy. I think there's, you know, there's some details to be jerked out. But I think that it all, it kind of depends on the number of moorings that we're talking and, you know, rules around waiting lists.
Under twenty, right.
Easily under twenty.
Yeah.
There's just not that much room. And we're looking at over off the Barrett's Cove there. Giving a little bit more room to the boat ramp for people to come in because that's been a stated issue that people have there. And the rowing group also has given us their thoughts on what they would like to come in. Their biggest problem, especially with some of their bigger skulls, is when the wind's blowing out of the northwest and coming right down, they end up having to be a beam coming in there. And so they'd like a little bit more maneuverability there. Then we have potential over at Bob's Bridge there, and we're discussing that. But still, when you look at it, it's just not going to be a lot of, a lot of moorings.
Question, what does the committee feel the urgency is to get this done with your timeline?
The urgency obviously is not going to build before the town at the annual town meeting. And what we're looking at now, I actually had some emails today that try to get some of this information out to people during the summer here. And if, you know, if the board looks at it and likes what they see, frankly, trying to change things around halfway through the summer probably doesn't make much sense. It's, it is what it is. What we, what we have out there, people have already started working on the moorings out there already. And I think that's just where we at. So it's, whether it's something, whether it's a special town meeting later on in the, after the boating season, that's something to discuss. June for a, June twenty-twenty is probably late. I suspect middle of April, and so that's when people start working with us.
Do you feel that because of the press and that this is coming on, that there may be a problem? People jumping in this year before, these ordinances are enacted?
I know of at least one new mooring that's going in. I have had people ask me, what's going on with the mooring situation? So whether we're going to end up with a hundred chlorox bottles out there with a cinder block on the bottom?
That brings to the question of grandfathering. Well, that's another part. Doesn't, no, which, grandfathering doesn't have to occur. You have a zone for safety that's regulated by density, you don't have to grandfather anything. That was, it came up at our last meeting, so it's a timely segue actually. And then, you know, questions or consensus are supposed, if, since this is out there, if people think there's an opportunity, I can get a mooring now that won't be affected by the ordinance. My personal position on it is that grandfathering should not be taken into account at all. That when, when, if an ordinance does, no, no, the fact that we start from scratch and everybody is on the same thing.
Yes.
To that extent, how did the committee quantify the problems out there? You should be able to identify the problem and give a quantified.
Didn't, the existing problems that we've had have been primarily complaints about access negress to the ramp. Some stuff that frankly, I don't know if we're going to address at all in, in an ordinance is access to the boats, swimming out to the boats and stuff like that, people complaining about that. Whether that's a safety issue or not, that's, that's, there's no swimming at boat ramps. That's what the sign says in the boat ramp, so.
People don't.
Right, exactly.
Well, was it?
Not allowed to swim in a boat ramp?
Not at the boat ramps. There's two signs that say, not each one, say.
I'm just wondering, is that state, is it a law or is it a?
I do not know.
As I, as I understand, it came with the funding.
Most, yeah.
What funding?
Federal dollars to do that at boat ramp, and it's for access, boating access only, not for swimming?
Both, both of those boat ramps got pass-through money from the feds through the state to improve.
And what's the, what's the range where you can, how, what constitutes the boat ramp area?
It's just the ramp.
I think it is just current.
Oh, just the actual ramp?
The ramp and the dock.
Right.
What they don't want is a, is a kids' women there when someone comes in, brings boat in and sort of back in the trailer.
So if there is someone who parked there, walked into the woods, and then swam off of there to, to their mooring, it'd be okay?
It just seems to me that there's an advantage, there's advantage in the town. And what is the advantage of, when we talked about north turn last year, beyond the morning season, we couldn't see a quite a challenge in parallel with what the committee's doing. That would be wise to be looking at this summer and there are just generic areas physically.
Yep.
And making sure we're identifying the right locations and density because that's what you really have to do here. Honestly, I'm not sure if densities are beyond more intensive standards in certain areas. I don't know that, and we should before we go regulating to try to permit moorings, not to mention the second category is what is a mooring, which has to be addressed.
And that's the definition, as we, as we go through that and.
The more is out there, don't we? Right, most of the moorings want to meet the state requirement, not more. I would want to see that as part, I would personally.
That's part.
Agree, but I think we have to have that. You have to have physical evidence of what the issues are. I think the only, you know, the only, I guess, the issue that comes to mind with that is, you know, looking at something so official as mooring density areas, in fact, when they're hopped, they have just a little seven or eight moorings, right? Might be hard to accurately quantify that, you know.
At the point, I would celebrate.
I think because everything's so congested there, you have rowing, you have beach for swimming, and you have rowers, and then you have moorings, and then you have a boat launch all over the ramp, so there's four or five U-boat crews in this smaller area.
I've, a mooring owner emailed me recently and said currently there's two dozen moorings that are not shorefront owned moorings.
Sure.
So that's the, that's the scope of what we have right now. And then the question is, is where we can fit stuff. And we've, we've got some, is a, is an interesting issue. Common sense says from the shorefront, the high waterline, two hundred feet out would be the best place to boat lanes. Even though the headway speed only is out to two hundred feet. One, if you're a mooring owner, you want to have it close to shore, sorry, you don't have to go all the way out there. And two, from usage, the farther you get away from that shorefront, the less people obey that headway speed limit.
Sure.
And so when you get into these, into, it's relatively narrow at Barrett's Cove. And so when people want to make a turn and come around, you know, if there's moorings out to two hundred feet on that one side, it will impact people's usage from that area. It's, but that's, again, that's what we're looking at in terms of.
In the size of boats, it impacts the number of, 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 even more, and question that.
Yeah, each, each, if we go through the process, if someone applies and wants a mooring out there and they are first come and they're first served, how big's your boat? That will determine what you have for ground here, that's what it is, and where it goes.
Right. One other consideration that I think of is if you have tremendous amount of moorings right down there at Barrett's Cove, it's a really big swimming beach.
Yes.
What's that?
City of Southern.
Well, but no, for more convenient, it's.
That's why I said that.
Yeah, the tendency is, but that, that means you've got more pollution. And, 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 I mean, swimming beaches on a lake right there, which is. And, and, and when it means swimming beaches on a lake like that, which is.
Yeah, it's, that's, that's one of the things we're looking at is, you know, you're not going to impact aquatic vegetation here, you know. You put down a block and you've got a chain on it and that thing's swinging around and you're right in the middle of aquatic vegetation, then you've got moonscape right underneath there.
If there's no flow or something in there, then you have a real problem.
Yeah. Luckily, we've done surveys in the last couple of years and we found native stuffs.
I'd also say the more complex we get around, sizes and standards and equipment and all of that, the more untenable this is going to get from an administrative perspective as well.
What we're looking at is that will be the inland harbor master's job.
Well, that's, I mean, also, yeah, I think that this has the opportunity to get administratively very burdensome very quickly. So I think that that's something that we need to always keep it in consideration. And just saying that's going to be the inland harbor master's job. I think that it gets, you know, the harbor master doesn't do a great deal of administrative work. And like Steve Pixie's job is not doing a lot of the administrative work. We push a lot of that onto the harbor clerks. And that is just so labor intensive and they spend great chunks of the year where all they do is harbor related admin. So I, I think that, you know, we just want to be really careful that we're not putting ourselves in a similar situation when it comes to our inland.
And that's what Taylor's been schooling.
I'm sure he has. That's in that hand, I would want to see the quantification of that, the impact on the town, not just in discussion. So if there.
And I think that it's probably. Yeah, that would be helpful, but I think that me and my staff who have experience with that, they'll, they're going to be the best ones to judge that.
I would agree.
You know, people like Marlene and Liz who've been doing it for years.
We should have that called Harrison maybe.
I don't, I think that they'll be able to, you know, they'll be able to look at the, what the rules are and kind of figure out, well, how do you do this and that? This is what we'd have to set up, this is how long it's going to take.
Really makes sense now to, I know we're making some changes to the draft at the moment, but at this next stage to get that to the guys and kind of weigh in from the administrative standpoint.
That would be very helpful.
Very helpful.
Yeah, I think the next iteration of that, you know, there'll probably be some stuff we still have to work out, but in terms of the, the staff experience on that stuff, I think we can send it up, especially for the applauding for a permanent and that sort of thing.
I think for, for, to make that work the best way would be to actually come up with a number of boats. I know you said seven or eight and you said twenty-four. I think it's kind of probably be ended up ballpark with twelve boats in that in Barrett's Cove. And I think if you could just try to define that right off, because if we're trying to manage twenty-four boats as opposed to twelve boats, it's a very different.
Sure.
Hold on, is there going to be a cap?
Well, there has to be a cap. I mean, you can't be unlimited. There's going to be a defined mooring area and only a certain number of boats can fit in that area.
There's a, there's, in, in every harbor there ends up being a cap unless, I mean, the, the only question I have on that is, and we've dealt with it, is boat size. In a given area, you might be able to have three twenty-foot pontoon boats or five fourteen-foot fish boats. And that's.
Well, and that's what I think in the, like, instead of making it, what's going to make it more difficult is if you don't define the boat size and then we have to mess around with, okay, well, we've got five quarter here and it's got this much, like, we can't be doing that.
That's what Steve Pixie does all the time.
Right, and we can't, yeah, we can't be doing that. So it's got to be, you can have X amount of boats and they have to be between this size and anything outside of that cannot go in there.
And then there's the whole thing, I mean, a boat that doesn't have a motor on it has a much smaller impact. Is there any way to?
Sailboat.
I mean, we can, we can handle a lot of canoes moored out there with very little negative impact.
Yes, but I don't think that people are probably going to be mooring canoes. Sailboats are interesting. They may not have as much fossil fuel impact, but they got ahead of the water.
They don't do as much damage if they have somebody though.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. But it's, it's, again, we'll, we'll look at that in terms of what we have for size restrictions and stuff like that.
Can you restrict horsepower or?
That's a state legislature.
So you can't, you can't get preference on moorings based on anything other than the total height of the boat?
Oh, in terms of our mooring ordinance, I would think to be able to do that. Good thing. Well, clearly a lot more work to be done to get it well down the path just to come back again. And I'll look at the next level. And I'll need the minutes for.
I'd like to lower the boat. If there's a way to say, you know, sailboat, even just from a whole, it's absolutely from a current footprint standpoint, it's, a sailboat has a just much smaller impact. I've been digitizing all the town records and looking back in the thirties, there, thirties or maybe the forties, there was a big uprising because people living on the Gannick Lake or using it were like totally alarmed by all the motor boats. Like, all of a sudden, motor boats are appearing. And the select board was like, oh, gosh, well, we've, we've talked to the motor boating association and they promised they're barely going to be out there next year. And everyone was like, okay. But to see the reaction to people when it went from being a lake that didn't have these boats to all of a sudden, it was like, how, everybody agreed, we can't possibly let this happen. And then this little, this.
And then jet skis and laws of the state also has a lot of regulation on what boats go into state.
I mean, we could, there can be an ordinance that says, based on horsepower, based on, there is, that does happen.
Yes.
We don't have jet skis, that's because of.
The state can't possibly.
Yeah, but it's, the state doesn't just come up with their own ideas. They, they come up with the ordinances or the, the rules for each lake based on input from the community. It's not like they just, Camden said we want to jet skis, that we can make them happen.
All right, Paul, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Paul.
We'll get to you soon.
Okay.
I think we'll go on to approval of downtown Dangy thing, I mean.
Dangy.
Try raising, try Dangy thing.
Dangy.
Hi, everyone, Deb Dodd. And I'm here for a very simple request. I've talked to Audra and Jody both about this a couple of times. We are going to be needing to put together, launching a fundraising campaign to raise money to create a mural on the Turner's wall that abuts the mechanic street parking lot. And we would like the town to be our fiscal agent to receive donations either by cash or check, as well as we hope to set up a, I'm not going to say this right, crowd source funding. Crowdfunding source.
Crowd source.
Crowd source funding.
Got it.
And also have the town be able to receive those funds for us in order to raise money to the mural. And we have gotten permission from David Turner. David Turner has always been very supportive of doing something on that wall. And he has agreed to the process that we think we need to go through in order to get a mural on the wall. As you all know, that wall is problematic. It's not a, just a nice brick wall, it's not a smooth wall, it has a lot of variations to it. And since we came up with this idea a couple of years ago, we looked at the wall and how can we best do a mural that will have some staying power? And that wall itself as it is will not really readily accept a mural painted directly on it. So we are going to be creating a system of panels on which the mural will be painted and then installed on the wall. So if you remember when we were here back in March talking about mechanic street lot, Raffi gave you a brief introduction and showed you sort of a concept of what we had, which is sort of a twenty by twenty foot mural that will be applied to that wall. That may have to change a bit because we're still going to have parking up against that wall. And so that mural was going to come down a little bit lower because there was going to be no parking up against that wall. So we may have to change the shape of the mural or exactly where, where it goes, but that concept still is what we're, what we're looking forward to. Our first step, when we first raised the money, is to actually get a nice fresh coat of paint all along that wall. So hopefully, early on in the system, we'll have a clean wall with a nice background paint on it that will act, sort of act as the backdrop for the mural. And Steve Karen of Karen Painting has very generously said that he will donate paint, masonry paint for that project for us. And when we raise the money, we will pay him for his crew and the use of equipment because they'll have to use scissor lift. So that's sort of the first donation that's already come in to us, which I think is great. And Chip Lake has also offered some space of his boat storage area for us to actually paint on these, on the panels. And through Jeremy Martin's contacts, we've been talking to Science Services of Maine that actually has a product that will work as the panels for which the mural will be painted on and a frame that will be applied and then that will be applied to the wall. So we haven't completely finalized the design because of this change that we've had to go through probably in the shape, I mean, the actual design of the mural. But I think you may remember the concept. And as we get closer, we'll bring that to you so you can, you can see that. And as we get ready to launch the.
You mean the actual image?
The actual image.
Because I think last time you were like, no, it's higher property, so it's not, the select board doesn't need to be involved at all.
Well, we want you to be informed. We want you to be informed and see it. David has approved the concept of, of what we're doing and we do want you to be informed because it's going to be part of our publicity campaign is showing what kind of an image we're going to have up on the wall. And the goal is to have an image, a mural that'll have an impact as well as it physically having some, physically having some staying power.
How much are you looking to raise?
Well, that kind of depends on what we end up with, with the final size. It's a very ambitious goal. It could be nineteen thousand dollars. The reason is partly because of how problematic that wall is. We spent some time looking at, could we smooth out and resurface the wall? Could we smooth out just a certain section with sort of a re-stepping kind of an application? Or could we actually have a digital type of vinyl covering upon the wall? And consensus really on the team was that the separate structure that gets applied to the wall would be the most practical, even though it's not, not inexpensive.
Would it be removed?
It could be, which is important actually, because if the property owner wants to sell the building and if the next owner, since it's on their property, isn't in love with it, or if something, if the town decides for some reason to sell the parking lot and have something built there, the mural would no longer be seen. So it could be removed. It could be removed if, you know, anything needed to be done to.
It could be moved somewhere else or.
Could be.
Or whatever.
So that's one of the things that gives us the flexibility for that.
Does Steve have any consideration of that?
He has not raised them, but we have asked those questions. And we had Sam Smith at Smith &amp; May come and do, with, with David Turner's permission, do some test moorings to see, to make sure that that will work. And Sam said it would be just fine. And we also, the gentleman who came down from Science Services checked it out as well. So we, we covered that. We believe we've covered that, I'll put it that way. We think we did homework on that side.
Well, there's the long-term, like our living here with water, ice, freezing, melting, if you get the long-term conditions of that. I don't know the weight, I don't want to do the weight.
I don't know what the total weight will be either. But the nice thing about these panels, it's called Econolite, I believe, and it's an aluminum, sort of aluminum laminate product, and it has very, very weather, weatherproof, very waterproof. It's not exactly what you see on the highway for highway signs. I had a cut sheet that I, we gave to David so he can see what would be coming up on his wall. It's very thin, like a quarter of an inch thick, that's, and that's all it is, but it's extremely weatherproof, which is good. So I just need your permission to have you guys ask as fiscal agents so we can then finish creating our fundraising campaign and launch it.
So I guess, first of all, I, I'm very surprised. I think the mural was wonderful and I wanted to do it and thank you for, for doing it. I just, I feel like we have to have, with the whole parking lot thing, there were maybe some confused property owners or, I feel like we, in order for us to approve fundraising to be something for somebody else's property, we really might have something in writing from the property owner saying that they're supportive of the process. Somebody explain to me why, it just feels, I mean, because last time we had with a, with a parking lot, we came back, like, so, and I didn't know about this and.
Yeah, well, I mean, they, and they still, we still need to talk to them about the parking lot. But maybe, you know, ways, so if you all feel comfortable moving this forward tonight, you could do a contingent on an agreement from the property owner.
I just understand why the town, why the town, like, why?
Very clear.
I get that, but.
Because we're not a 501(c)(3).
I know, but neither we, I mean, I'm looking at things.
But you're.
For the river and so the timing.
Why didn't you do that last resort? Well, we did actually reach out to a couple of people to see if there was 501(c)(3) available. But it's been done for Justin June, did it for the Mount Batty Tower. So this is not something that has not been done. And the town benefits from it. Certainly the mechanic street lot will benefit from the mural. That whole side of downtown will benefit from the improvement.
And it's not actually easier with, with a bomb by 501(c)(3), like, for the, for the river stuff, people are much more, are much happier to give money to the nature conservancy that would then oversee it. The select board changes in Camden and, since it's so separate, it just seems like it would, you know, Ucar's or.
Well, we actually have approached Ucar's. And that was, they would help us do some publicity for us, but they're not going to ask, ask us a fiscal agent. So we have asked, but that's a very good question to ask us. And we actually talked to a lawyer as well about establishing a 501(c)(3). And we were actually discouraged from it because it's not an instant process and it's not worth it necessarily. Let's do it in the next two weeks so we can launch fundraising campaign.
Are the funds flowing to the town of Camden or to a special account in the town of Camden?
It would be restricted account.
But it's named, checked when we mail to.
Town of Camden. Like they are for the other things that we've done, like fundraising for, goodbye present for playgrounds and stuff like that. That also makes it, if somebody wants it, it'll be deducted.
Right.
And certainly, I think Audra, I think I talked to you about, was there anything we needed to check with Bill Kelly about? And could Bill maybe suggest some language?
Oh, yeah. I do think that purchasing policies and stuff, I do feel that when you give money when it goes through the town, that we then have to kind of have some oversight.
That's why I'm meeting, I'm meeting with Jody tomorrow at 1:30.
Go to bed and.
To hammer that out, you know, to hammer out what the process would be. For instance, when we want to pay Karen Painting for the labor and for the equipment, we need to know how we would go about doing that. So I'm meeting with Jody tomorrow at 1:30.
It would be just like for the historic, for the historic plaque. If we had a bill come in, the, I can't remember the name of the person who's actually doing that, but they bring the bill in, they say that this is legit, goes on the town warrant and it goes through you guys.
But there's no, it just, it's a big amount. People are going to ask us, why did you choose this artist rather than this artist? Shouldn't it have been a Camden resident? Why didn't you? But we're not going to have any response to that. And that's what, I mean, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just kind of trying to understand the process. There've been a few things that I really don't, for example, apparently the playground fund right now. So people, they can fundraise from playground at the tannery. I am totally opposed to playground at the tannery. But then it's used at, because somebody, somewhere agreed to it, then it's used as a, well, the town has an account for this, so this means they're, they've signed, and they don't think that would happen with this one unless you guys were like, we've decided to make it a, you know, a black angel. And, you know, then we'd be like, no, we never. And, you know, then we'd be like, no, we never had
Well, remember, other than, what we're asking for is for you to be the fiscal agent. And yes, we are asking you to donate some of Jody's time, in a way. But we're not using town funds, other than what we would need Jody's process to go through whenever it's time to pay a bill. So we're not using town funds.
Right. It's just that I think that people, when they give money
Just to the town?
I do think there's
But it's for We're not asking them just to donate to the general fund or to the town
Well, that's what I was asking, if we're going to have somebody that accounts for the town of Camden, mural law.
Right, be dedicated to town.
We do this quite often with other, you know, other things that are, I mean, I guess the reason why this is coming before you is because of the town committee doing it.
Right, I understand.
I don't, I don't think we've done it the right way, you know, in the past, I guess. I appreciate that you're actually going through the process of
Maybe this is an opportunity for you to put on a future agenda, how to do that.
Right. Procedure.
But
Are you okay with that?
After we stop.
Right, I'm not going to say no to it. I'm just trying to think of it. Because then the next one that comes to us, it's, well, you did it for this, we did it for this, and it was just
I don't mind you.
So we asked her a few questions, and she, you know, we ran her through the, some sort of a, not the person that supported the mural, so it's really fine, but it's
No, no, I understand. I think that having a policy about
That's what I was going to say.
What you do, what kind of organizations you can do that for, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I think in the future, I'm typing more serious time as a policy, you know, being a place where we collect funds and blah, blah, this, that, that policy, we should add
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I agree with you. So that, you know, you're going to motion to accept that.
I like the motion that we accept. And I love the downtown design team to use the companies of funding, I'm sure they do.
Subject to get the term of approval of the personal state, the property owner, the homeowner's statement of, this is all fine, really.
That having, I need to know what all this is fine means, so we can write, get the letter written properly.
Nicely, the owner's aware of the exception of the mural on the wall, and understands that the town's acting as an agent for collecting the funds.
So also, there's a risk of people donating, and we raise the money, and then the property owner changes his mind. So it would be good to just have, you know, there is
Intention, intention.
Right, that you should say, yeah, I do want to do this, and I'm going to
So, okay, the town is acting as a fiscal agent?
Yeah.
And agrees to the installation?
Yes.
Or the installation and/or creation and/or creation of a public art? Or just a mural? I'll just put that mural.
Sure, I'd say a mural, I mean, it's not private property, so it's Yeah, I don't know if that's really making a lot of difference, but it is.
My property at Town of McCannic Street.
If he owns it, he'd take it down.
And if it didn't happen, then money would go back to people, I assume. Right, you know, if we don't, if we don't collect enough, you know, collect enough money in order to be able to execute it.
Right, yeah.
And there may have to be a Plan B, you know, there may have to be, maybe have to be a Plan B, but our Plan, our Plan A is a fresh coat of paint on the wall, as we do our fundraising in order to have the rest of it developed, yeah.
I just think I went through lectures with Bill Kelly about my fundraising. When I presented the whole thing about the river, he was like, don't you know, Allison, there are a lot of ways this can go wrong, and you have to use the money for the way that you say it, and if you can't use it on, if you raise money for a study, you can use it for this. And so it's like, okay, when people donate, are they giving you the ability to say, well, if for some reason this whole mural breaks down, or doesn't, you know, the property owner walks away, is the design committee then empowered to say, well, we've decided that the next, you know, next priority public art project is
Leasing bathrooms. Heating the bathrooms on a public restroom. I suppose I could, Audra, I could jot this up, and you could just run it by Bill?
Yeah.
I'll just send you an email of what I think it would be, and you could I have a, we have a brief email from David, but this will have to be done. David Turner, the property owner.
Yeah, I get from Bill's, I'll be curious what he says about this after the, after the talk over that I got, so.
I think you say something that David Turner understands was, it's actually being constructed, right, right?
Yeah.
Because now, now it's gone from, I mean, maybe
He does, I mean, he's gotten a cut sheet on the Econolite, gave him the diary room from Science Services, on how the framing, he just wants to work, that has the notes about the L brackets and the size of this or that. He has that documentation. It's like when we didn't build the wall.
Just ask me one super quick thing.
Sure.
If he chooses to sell the building in two years, for example, and all these people, I go home and find $2,500 and write a check for the mural, and it's gone in two years, and I'm thinking, here's this wonderful piece of public art, do we have anything in place to, like, he sells the building and someone takes it down? Will we have anything in place guaranteeing a term? Because we're asking people to give money for this project.
Do we have anything in place guaranteeing what?
Some kind of a term. I know when the library, for example, sells a bench, they have a guaranteed term that that bench is dedicated to a person.
Right.
If that's correct, right?
So he gets around two years, and now he's sad he doesn't like this anymore, and he put it down a lot of time about
Or he sells the building and they want it to be down.
But we would own the, in that case, that's where, like, the town
We would own the
Town would own, town wouldn't, but the actual mural is what I'm hoping. That we could remove it, because it's removable, it would be owned
Who would own that?
I know, I was just thinking this too. The town would own it, the actual
The citizens who donated would own it, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
Or would the property owner actually would, if it's on his property, and that's a Bill Kelly question
Well, I think we're going to clarify that.
Yeah, no, the town should own it, because it's not like the
The first grant, cutting agents
When we get a EPA doesn't own the
I don't think the town goes with attachments or
I think we should have it removed, cut it somewhere else.
That we reuse it?
Yeah, this is
Then it gets reused.
I don't think David Turner's going to say, no, I want, like, I mean, if he does say that, then we might be worried that it has a plan.
Well, I think
It'd be like a river, and go reinstall.
It's like, why don't we own it?
Audra, could I rely on you to ask Bill Kelly the question about the current ownership, the ownership issue?
We'll figure that out.
Figure that out before I write that, before I write this thing up. Thing, that was, that's great.
But I, this is a project that I'm really, really into, so I'm really, I just want to make sure that, I want to see it succeed, and I want to make sure that you aren't giving donations and then saying, what the heck, like, it's off.
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder about the murals painted in Rockland, if the building owner decides they want a good paint over it, I don't know what they did in Rockland.
Well, they just walked by, and it's not movable.
That's, and it's not like fundraising from the public that goes through the town at all, that's all between the building owner and the program that's doing it, which is
Oh, that's, oh, the downtown, Main Street?
No, 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 they have nothing to do with it. It's all the building owner and like a after-school program.
Okay, so that's not an issue there. Okay.
I can reach out to, I will say, Dave, where they've done a number of these, and on private property.
Yep.
And the town is, the city actually funded it, they have a public art, you know, budget. So they fund it, and I'll look and see what they did.
That's different, well, that's
Well, but it might
But it's similar.
They might have
If there are terms, how long that has to stay here. I think it should qualify
But it's not, it's not fantastic, or, like, they just roll it out, it's not
It might not be fantastic.
But I'll, let's, I think just
Okay, if you
Let's get back to the motion at hand, I mean, I think we just had to link it, but I think we have to go back to, to the motion that says that we can approve the idea of the of the
Town being
Fiscalization, but that's qualified on getting a statement, and what was including the thing you mentioned, was his interpretation from, you know?
And a statement from Bill Kelly.
Yeah, that's a guess.
When he wants.
Right, and then not doing anything else.
Well, Bill will explain what we need to put in the letter regarding that.
Maybe Bill first, probably, or second.
Well, we need, we need Bill to review what we're going to create, and he needs input on what we need to say.
Audra's suggesting we have a first class.
And that would be, I love that.
So that, you know, that works.
Twist my arm, thank you.
Any more discussion? Oh, thanks a lot, David.
And we'll keep you updated on the progress of what the final design looks like and how the fundraising is. Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
See you tomorrow.
I'll work on it, David, select for approval of the municipal FY '20 budget.
All right. Where do we want to start with this?
At the beginning.
Okay. Do we want to go, how do you want to do your review? Do you want to go line to line, or do you just want to sort of pick out, pick out the big areas where you think there's discussion around it?
Yeah.
Well, I think there's a couple ways to do it, and that's one way to do it, you know, but also, we talked last time, we have talked about the overall budget, the overall objectives in the budget, if you have an inquiry, if you have a, or if you refer those through tabs, like tab, I do that too.
Do you have your worksheet, don't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I have it electronic. I thought I gave you a copy. I emailed it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, do you want me to send you another one?
Yeah, just with the topic line.
Yeah, I just need a computer.
I forgot this one. I forgot my charger cord.
Yeah.
It's kind of there.
That's the scanning computer right there. Yeah, pretty, scanning laptop. It's nice and fast, isn't it?
It really is.
Good luck with it. So the, so the
Thanks, Mark.
The budget was approved by
Do you find it? Okay.
So the budget was approved by a budget committee, and to Audra and Jody have your recommendations in terms of adjustments of things, you know?
So we did have some. So I'll start from the top with our proposed adjustments. So the first one, under public safety, and it's the streetlights, electricity.
Yeah. Maybe you have them under there.
So if you go to that line
Okay, right on.
Are you talking about what works?
For the budget.
Stand by somewhere.
No, this is in the actual body of the budget, under the, it's like the public safety area.
It's under streetlights.
Same with streetlights?
It's going to be page page 19.
No, that's EMS.
Oh, on your page, others?
Well, I, what, what, are you
Okay, go one more page, from EMS, and then you'll see streetlights.
Downtown streetlights. 0510, 2035, on page 20.
Yep, so it's actually electricity, which is one line above it.
Yes.
Yep. Oh, go ahead, Audra.
$5,000 budget range.
Yes, $25,000. Yes, so we're suggesting that, and that just gives us a bit of buffer, just depending on how long it takes for that project to
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Oh, right, so it was such a drastic
Yes. Yeah, so we just want that little bit of buffer in case it takes the real term longer than anticipated, so, yeah.
So it's a $20,000 addition?
Yes, a $20,000 addition. Or
Yeah, so, and I think where that will even out is if you go down to the debt service, the LED streetlight conversion, we're proposing changing that from $54,000 to $34,000. And that's the, that's the $20,000 difference, so it's just moving it around. And also, so get, yeah, get rid of that. And then, this is something we didn't talk about with the budget committee, but we wanted the select board to do it, because we just, at the time, we weren't sure exactly how that project, like, what sort of approvals we need, or the full cost of it. So we think that the best way to move forward with that project is just to do a lease purchase agreement, to do the whole project. And so that would be, it would go under capital improvements, the whole $160,000 cost of doing that project, we would, we would do a lease purchase agreement. So we would borrow $160,000, so that would be an expense side in capital improvements. And then under the revenue side, we would have a $160,000 loan to pay for it. So it's all pretty much a wash, it's just moving this money to different areas in the budget than where it originally was, and we talked to the budget committee about it. But it's doing the same project.
So the $160,000 bond, $160,000 streetlight purchase, lease purchase agreement, modifying the principal LED, streetlight conversion from $54,000 to $34,000.
Oh, one thing I thought of, this would save us even more, I think, if we're going to pay for, you know, we can, under the debt service, no, no, that's the first payment is the $34,000 for that year.
The $34,000 is the debt service for the first year.
Yes. Yep, so that would be, that would be due August of 2019. And we would be doing a lease purchase, so we would have the option of being able to pay it off early if we wanted, as opposed to a bond where you can't.
But this plan, that lease purchase start transition to a bond?
No, it's strictly a lease purchase.
That's $160,000?
Correct, yeah. Yep.
I'm just saying, oh, sorry, instead of bonding, it's really
It's, yeah, it's loan, well, it should be loan proceeds, but
Okay, so, yeah, so basically, we're, in two, couple things, really on the LED lights, we're increasing electricity counts of the streetlights from $5,000 to $25,000. We're changing the debt service payment from $54,000 to $34,000, because we're doing a $160,000 worth of loan, at least, payment loan.
Which is, yeah, under the capital improvements.
That's a wash.
Yep.
Yeah. So that's kind of, that's same concept, just different way of structuring it than what we talked about with the budget committee. There was a bit of an addition to the police department health insurance line, and that just came down to us trying to anticipate what, another, a different choice that an employee might make.
It's like they talked about in school.
Same.
Yeah, this would be an increase to the police department by $11,000. Is it an actual lease purchase?
They're moving from a single plan to a family plan. The next area, this is where we, we've looked at, how can we sort of reduce costs? So we looked at the capital reserves, and given that the snowball finished the year with about, you know They finished the year with, you know, hitting their budget targets. We thought, instead of setting aside that $25,000 this year, like we did last year, we just not do that for this year.
In the reserve account, how, over
Twenty-five.
Right now.
Yep.
And that's the town's reserve, not the snowball.
Right.
The town reserve is 25,000, the budget committee was adding another $25,000, we're suggesting not to do that, because we have approximately 40, but 40 minus, what, for the groomer?
We have, right now, it's about $45,000 as of the 3rd of May, and we're hoping to use $33,000 of this year's to go towards next year for a groomer.
So say $35,000, maybe have eight or 10,000 to put in
Give or take.
In addition to the $25,000 we have currently reserved versus $50,000.
So that's a suggestion.
I think I love that, doing 345. Well, I mean, I don't, I don't really look at 45, I don't
No, we're going to, we're going to have residual bills coming in, minimal, but we're
Forty, $41,000.
Probably looking at a $10,000 spread.
Okay. Okay, and there were two others here for that, or if you're going to do that, sure, I think. Okay, and, and there were two others here for that over there, if you would imagine that thing.
So for harbor projects, we've got pretty, like, good reserve built up with that, so we thought we could cut that in half, what we allocated to, um, by ten thousand.
So the budget committee asked for twenty thousand additional reserve, we're proposing ten thousand additional reserve.
Well, we have all those quotes coming out.
We do, but what we've been, like, this year, we just, we just paid for it out of, you know, the capital improvement budget, and then we offset it with, um, the use of surplus, that's what we did this year.
The reserves were, wasn't designated for anything.
Do you know how much?
Um, we currently have a hundred and twelve thousand in harbor projects reserve. That's not counting what you voted to spend. How much was it that Steve?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand, I think ten of that was gonna be out of harbor projects.
That's correct.
And the rest was gonna come out of piling.
Right, four.
I think there was four out of piling.
Oh, was it four out of piling?
Four out of piling, okay.
I wouldn't worry about that, that's a much bigger, much bigger project.
She all technically could be.
I, I mean, I think that when you talk about.
There's so much for the harbor.
Just the public landing itself, that's gonna be so big, that's gonna be a whole other bond.
Steve says we have to do the boardwalk, like, right away. I mean, the wooden part, right.
Just replacing the planks.
That's replacing the planks, if you just do it, do you do it?
I mean, I guess at some point, you have.
Well, replacing that whole boardwalk, that's, it's all connected to the whole landing, and that's like a big, big project.
I get that, but, and I've said that, you know, me, I don't like to fix anything. But he did kind of, I mean, it was clear to me there were, there are some serious concerns, with, just, I mean, that somewhere people will fall through there.
Oh, no, no, and we're.
The nails and.
We are replacing.
At the end of its useful.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, and, and we are replacing, like, the individual planks as they need to be, but it's not something where, I mean, that's.
We have to go through that.
Steve says, when he does that, usually he's like, well, I'm just getting through, like, until next year, when we really, and I'm like, no.
No, no, we're not doing that.
Well, but do you feel at all like that's for a fact?
So you said we get one twelve minus, what, one twelve minus seventeen?
Minus, um.
Ten.
Um, fifteen.
Okay, so what's.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
So fourteen, so basically that's nine, we're comparing.
A little under a hundred thousand.
How much?
A little under a hundred thousand.
Okay, so say it's ninety-eight thousand, and we're adding ten wards, that is, we go up this road, and ten thousand reserves, right? So there are grades up to a hundred eight, hundred and eight thousand dollars, or the person's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Right.
I think it's fine, I mean, now, if you guys just push that, ten thousand.
You think what's mine?
Just going with ten thousand dollars, adding the reserve versus twenty.
It's, it's not important if you're me, I'm gonna go with the expert. You just don't wanna have to spend any from any of the other.
I agree, I do think we got to, but, um, if we're.
You add just a lot for contingency, except for that. I don't know.
I mean, you know, ten thousand dollars is not difficult to find, if you did, I think that probably could be easier than ten thousand dollars, that's what I think, it could be. We were at least standing on board, I mean, new, sea rise and all this stuff, and replacing, replacing peers, replacing all.
That's a multi.
That's for study, that's for study.
Yeah, if you study something, that's gonna be a whole big difference.
Yep.
But replacing the plants is.
So harbor projects is for things like dredging?
Nope, there's a separate.
Separate.
Yeah.
So I have a question. Kendall, you getting all this? This is gonna be, this is a cheap one, isn't it?
I was thinking that earlier.
But you don't need, I, I think we can all go back later and say, if we want this or this added, but for, there's no need for the minutes to. All the time, then they decided, yes, and then no.
Well, we'll finish this, but we need something like that.
Yes, yeah, a lengthy discussion took place.
Alright.
Tree conservation, yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of the other one that we said.
Because the budget committee already did it.
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna make any value judgment on that, I'm just saying.
When, when we talked about maybe including with minus.
I didn't hear when you.
I.
He said the budget committee.
The budget committee.
No, no, what, what, what section?
Tree conservation.
Oh, it's, it's under.
Reserve.
Emerald Ash Forest.
Oh, okay, right, okay.
And it's about whether or not we classically increased five thousand, and somebody who said that we're gonna increase five thousand, but during the discussion with the committee motion to go to fifteen thousand, I think, that's, I think that's what others asking here.
I, I would, I'd say that that's kind of like an area where there's not an urgent need, so if you wanted to, if you're looking to make some cuts to bring the overall expense down, that's where you could do it. And not have a consequence for this year.
But it could cause consequences in the future.
Sure, I mean.
And the other thing is.
Maybe you want to put twenty thousand in that line next year, where you don't have the same competing priorities, like, I, I'm just saying, like, I'm just giving ideas. Nobody has to go with this, everybody could maybe decide that's not what you want to do.
I think this is another one where the actual problem, if we were gonna do any, hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially, so.
Right.
You know, do we.
Well, classically, we've done five thousand.
Save like two trees with our.
Yeah, three or, or twenty, however much it will end up having.
Another question, you've done five thousand in the past, that's what you did.
Yep.
We should stay in that track until we determine that it's something that's gonna be, maybe even then, we're talking twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars, we could add to it.
Oh, hundreds.
The, the estimate cost is, of course, of course.
Well, I'm not, you know, Emerald Ash Forest is not the only thing that's direct to our forests.
No, I understand.
And so that's, that's what these funds are being needed for, we have a huge problem to make with the, what's that?
That moth.
Brown.
Brown tailed moth.
Uh, that's weird, so I don't know if that's gonna be, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but this is a, a contingency to cover these things.
Maybe we want to plant more trees just to use their kind of pressure, or what's in what's the line I recall?
This, this is for.
Tree conservation.
Start with the tree. Tree conservation, that's right.
Yeah, it is right.
That's like if we have a tree that we wanna take care of, rather than just.
Except for the actual budget pages themselves qualified to the Emerald Ash Forest.
Yes, they do.
The budget committee, and that's what I have.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't make it available for another buck too, basically.
Whatever hits us first.
That's, that's something, it's here for always, like, the select board to also change the description of the line item, so if you'd like to do that, we can also.
Instead of, we just have the power to do that?
Sure.
Retroactively for the money that was raised before?
I mean, this is a select board budget, so if you want to put in the notes that it's for Emerald Ash Forest and other invasive species that are harming trees or whatever.
Right, but that is like the other time, the lines already in there is technically with a different note, but, I mean, what if.
I believe much tree did not like that.
Oh, it did, it did, I put it there last year. I try to remember as much as I can.
A box of defiance.
Whatever you want to do, I'm not gonna worry about this, but if it's us, we're all gonna spend the money, and if it's bad, whatever it is.
Insurance.
So the question is, what do we want to do?
So I've got a couple other little ones, do you wanna, will you go to the mall or?
Well, this, this one, we should resolve.
Right, from fifteen to five, I just like to talk.
That was, yeah, that was.
Can we split the difference?
But maybe.
Let's go with that.
Yeah, that way I'm feeling responsible about the trees, which is, this is something that I, and then we're not just hitting next year, we can capture it and establish next year.
So it's.
Ten thousand.
So another one we talked about, um, reducing by going with a hybrid, um, what was it? Hybrid administrative police vehicle, instead of a hybrid SUV. Cause it was, the hybrid SUV was about forty-five thousand dollars, whereas the hybrid administrative vehicle is about thirty-seven thousand.
What are you talking, the difference between?
He wants that, that's a hybrid SUV.
Wait a minute, you're talking about a sedan instead of an SUV?
Yes, for the admin car.
But if, if I remember the, the discussion, the reason, they, he wanted to try the SUV, and then if it works, he can transfer it to. From a vehicle. Replace it, it wasn't going to always stay his administrative vehicle, it was a way to test the SUV.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I, he wasn't.
Yeah, so why would you take that out?
Because we don't need to test the SUV, honestly, it's gonna be, even Randy said it's gonna be the only thing available soon, so.
You're saying it's gonna be a foregone.
It's gonna be a foregone conclusion, it's just a hybrid version of what we already have, it's not like, it's not like Randy's gonna be like, okay, it's safe, guys, or there aren't even gonna be other options, if, like, what if Randy doesn't like it, there. I think we should just take the money out altogether, for the, there's obviously a large amount of disagreement around the cruiser, and that it's a great way to save money. We should just not get a new one, just have them stay one more year as a hybrid.
Well, this, this is not a discussion we should have without his input, we should make that decision without his input.
No, we don't, at, at town meeting, it'll be a break, because it'll be like the budget committee recommends that.
Okay, so, just, this is a little background to all of this.
Please.
We knew that this was going to be the sort of discussion that you'd be having, so this was Randy's kind of compromise, that instead of the forty-five thousand dollar cruiser, it'd be a cheaper administrative vehicle, and that's a eight thousand dollar savings.
What, what, what model was he?
The Ford Fusion Hybrid.
Really?
Yeah.
He's probably not that car.
That's a good one.
Do you want to take some wait till right after that?
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
No, they've got.
This was the.
The one he said he wouldn't do.
No, no, the one, he tested, he's already tested it.
I know, but he said it wasn't gonna work.
See, it wouldn't work with that, but it wouldn't work as a police vehicle. As a, as a.
I, it's already, yeah.
No, no, he's fine with it as an administrative car.
But then it will always stay as his administrative car, and what we need to replace an SUV, then he's gonna get it.
Well, then we'll have a discussion about whether we need to all separate it. The SUV is.
Yes, so be it.
Oh, my, well, this is. It's still a lot of buying. Well, that, I mean, that's so much better, that's a clear decision between forty-five thousand dollar SUV, which literally is not gonna reduce, the purpose of a hybrid would be to reduce fuel consumption. Going to, from a sedan that's a non-hybrid to a hybrid SUV, we are no longer gonna accomplish that goal, so.
Well, that's not true.
Yes.
Going from a regular gas sedan to a hybrid SUV definitely would still stay on.
No, no, no.
At least we're going for a hybrid sedan.
No, I'm saying the, the difference between the forty-five for the hybrid SUV, and the, there's no, there's really nothing to be gained by the, by the hybrid SUV, so we're not, the goal is to reduce fuel consumption, so we, since that doesn't, wouldn't accomplish that goal, I would say Randy's compromise of
The fusion.
The fusion as an administrative vehicle is, we can also reduce the, we'll reduce fuel consumption, they say that you.
Get the smaller.
And because it's a hybrid. What I really want is for them to get the plug-in.
What you really want is what?
There's a plug-in administrative vehicle, but we can have that argument later.
But then, it's, it's still, it's administrative, but it's still his vehicle, in our time, and he's gonna need to, to go where he needs.
It has a gas tank too, it's, it's administrative vehicle for police chiefs, so it should be.
It sounds like a relatively safer thirty-seven thousand, but you know, there's a, there's a better option, definitely.
Well, we're just talking about a dollar amount that we're gonna allocate right now, so.
But the, the one difference I would bring up is, is making exaggeration, but we are taking away the option of that vehicle, you know, it's gonna stay as an administrative, which is fine.
We can buy one, still, when we, when it comes time to getting a new patrol vehicle.
Which will probably be next year then.
We'll have the same conversation when we start. I, I would definitely support reducing, I still kind of want their original together, because just making this last a little longer, the problem's not so bad. Right.
So you're, I was suggesting we, we establish thirty-seven thousand, you could suggest a huge conversation. I agree.
Right, we still get to improve the actual vehicle, and if we really wanted to go higher because something came up, we could use the department to, to, or something to add on to the.
Yeah, we absolutely could.
Alright, okay, so that's kind of, that was.
I was saying, that was Randy's conversation.
Yes, yeah, Joey, with Joey is my witness.
Yes.
I'm impressed, actually.
Um, okay, so on the revenue side, we are proposing a fifteen dollar increase on our interest.
I say fifteen dollar.
Fifty wow.
That's really cutting pennies.
Fifteen thousand, yeah, it would be cutting pennies, fifteen thousand increase on the revenue side and our interest earned on our checking, and that's because of the wonderful negotiating work our finance director did to get our interest rate on our cash accounts increased to two percent from one point two.
Yay.
So anyway, that's.
Can, can not apply my cost of waste to application.
Well, that's my next move, so.
Well, it's different rules.
Perfect, and you guys, and the adjustment trust fund.
Yes, so we've, we've gotten rid of that twenty thousand five hundred, because at one point, we were proposing to use that to offset provider agency request, that then we took out altogether, and we're gonna deal with through the, um, trust fund committee. And, other than that, it's just the revenue side of the, um, lease purchase agreement for the streetlights. And then that brings us to a overall change, I think we're looking at three point five percent now. Um, so, let me look here. Oh, yeah, I, I just wanna like set it with this, and then you can talk about your other.
Well, maybe, but the overall, just backdrop again, I'll repeat it, the objective which I drive, pardon, was a target, you know, I felt like the, the budget committee's recommendation, I was supposed to, town manager's recommendation, because I've got this increase in my mind, the target, I, I, to me, it always think a target for an increase in town, a target for, like, for you, because the schools might say, we froze our accounts because they had targeted to me, that's, that's the kind of thing, we need, we need to think about the same way. There are tough decisions you have to make about money, because not one piece of anything is budgeted, it's justified, right, we're gonna make charges, that's why it is prioritization. And I think that we wrestle some of that right in there. But net, net, I think you're, you probably. You probably, I don't think you're in a true position much more than, so now they have to change it to zero, to zero net. You just repeat your, your.
I'm just, I'm putting things back to where it was before we talked earlier today, okay. Okay, so with that, um. We're at two point nine percent net increase. That's with, that's with adding in the tree conservation, and if, if you are in favor of the changes that Audrey just went through, that's where we would be. And then, I think there was one, I think the library part, two.
Well, I think there's a number, or I guess a number that we still, we can still discuss.
Oh, absolutely, but that, that's just.
But I, I, what we discussed right now, I believe, my math is right, I'm not sure it is, um, about anything else, um, oh, wait, that's, wasn't there a? Oh, I see. Oh, you're right, it's about a forty thousand dollar decrease.
Yes.
A net net, we'll discuss.
So, yeah, and what we were looking to do is to get us on the.
Right, 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 well, and not well, you know, that you were trying to. Well, the reason I qualify that, because in our numbers already are things like we put in some dollars and approve for about a hundred thousand dollars, for the wastewater treatment. Putting money into using in the future, even buy down the bonds or do stuff, rainbreakers hit, or do something like, so those are kind of special, if you take that out, you're kind of closer to the number.
Yes.
You're actually very close with it.
Yes.
Hundred thousand dollars.
And I would say that that hundred thousand dollars, the whole strategy behind that for the wastewater treatment plan, was around trying to buffer the tax impact that we saw in the future. Now, if you're going to go with a rate-based mechanism of funding it, that, that whole strategy of buffering the tax impact becomes less important. You might want to use it to buffer the rate impact, but maybe not at the same level, you know, and you still do have a couple of years to raise money to do that. And you still do have a couple of years to raise money to do that.
No, I was just gonna say, I guess perceptually it seems like it becomes less important. It makes it easier, I guess, you know?
Well, I still... I think the concept is great, you know, plenty for hit cons, you mean those changed? But the hundred thousand dollars, if we can number those for wastewater treatment.
Yes.
We could probably take that down a little bit to try to finance some things that probably would have been more advantageous to as a compromise to try to keep this... Is that a reserve?
Yeah, that would be a new...
Yes, you're putting money in a bucket of pressure, anticipating. Which is, I think it's a commitment, like we make sure you're wondering, I don't know, two hundred. You know, but it'll take it year by year. But I think that's one area we should keep in the back of our minds too. At least not doing one for a claim or something. I don't know, like dictating twenty-five thousand, maybe it's fifty thousand, maybe it's five thousand. I don't know, but I think we should keep that in mind because we've got a lot of demands. I mean, I still believe that we're not putting enough into some of our buildings here. Public safety's example is broken. And the money we have to repair is partial repair, not full repair.
I'm in favor of discussing public safety going too. I think they're getting along just fine.
Well, I mean, can you ask a question?
We have the surplus, was it the four million dollar surplus? That, making decisions at a time when we have that money to apply on some of these things. Are we using that?
Surplus, a special budget to... Surplus is, Julie can explain right now, she's an expert in this. Surplus, when you say surplus, you referring to our net cash position?
Yeah, I think he's talking about the use of the unassigned.
Unassigned, whatever they call it now.
Yeah, and the unassigned, sure, I can show you that question.
And usually that money, they're just paying for stuff. Because right now, we're set, what you're using to borrow, borrow against, and ourselves back. But it is a little higher than normal.
Producing surplus.
So we really use some of that.
We are using a bunch of that.
How much of it did we use?
Well, as it stands right now, we're looking to...
Was it like six, seven?
Like forty-seven, something like that. Nine hundred and forty-five right now.
Nine forty-five, and then how much of that are we proposing to pay back to ourselves?
Six hundred and ninety, six hundred and fifty thousand.
We're only spending to two hundred thousand, something that we're not...
Right, so right now, our unassigned fund balance is three million nine hundred thousand dollars according to our audit, and so...
Do you have a percentage in front of you of what that is? Of the total budget?
I'm sorry?
The percentage of percentage in front of you of what that is in total budget? Three point...
The three point nine? No, I can get it for you though. Let me find my calculator.
Ten percent, yeah. It's about, it's about a point three.
At what point could, can I bring up little things? Like that we wanted, I think we should get rid of or add?
So it's about forty percent?
Yeah, probably that's what I'm...
Of the town budget.
But the question of using more...
Right, so...
More unassigned, you're funding stuff.
The big chunk we're using were actually borrowing.
Right.
And there's no spend.
Keep in mind though that this is, this is a unique year and if you wanna be able, you're not gonna be able to do this every year. Or the more you do, the more you spend out of it this year, the less you're gonna have that buffer for doing this next year.
That's great, because largely our current audit...
But we're not talking big numbers, we're talking five thousand here, eight thousand there.
Yeah, I think that's...
But it all adds up, you know, we've already gotten to like close to three hundred, so...
Yeah, I think the question that I looked at this year's audit, when we started this week, when our net position went down, right? And that doesn't overfill for, and we've used, we have to remember, we've used some of this money already to buffer this year and last year because of the past, you know, the past poundings that have been served. And we've not had a lot of services, right? And we've used it, using much more than five thousand, I'm not talking about five thousand, but using more of it. Yet to a point, we started working with Chris though.
I would, yeah, I mean, I'd say that, Julian, I think we were very, very aggressive this year.
Probably more aggressive than Joey wanted to be.
So I would say, I would not, all right, I would not, I'd caution you against being any more aggressive than we've already been in terms of spending out of that.
I will agree. That's a good question.
Good question to ask.
That's a good question. Yeah, conceptually, I understand it makes sense to keep it in mind again for next year, but can we dip into that again and work to make some more to make savings? What's next?
So do you wanna go through maybe like analysis that you have?
Do you have any comments, like, in case there are any budgets we need to discuss? Otherwise, it'll be...
I do not.
Okay.
Well, there are a couple. Go ahead. I was gonna say, we went through, going through this, there are a few places where the budget committee, and we've taken a couple of those out already, just the town manager. I think there are a few others that are left that we haven't discussed yet. There's those things you wanna discuss, Allison, or just something else?
Did you have a specific one?
Sorry, no, different things. More like my own personal advocacy issues.
Because...
Absolutely, as we go through...
Do you wanna look, look what we're talking through?
I just, no, I just wanted to know where we're gonna... Let's go through the process first and then bring them up.
Okay, so provider agencies. I'm troubled by the shift toward funding garden club operations. Is that like the hanging flower baskets and things like that? Reeds maybe too? I just think that we've always kinda had those special aesthetic landscaping add-ons as a fundraising item. And, you know, there are all kinds of little things. Like I really dislike how the reeds go get taken down and thrown in the chopper and microcellulites.
Don't say something like that.
I just don't, I, I think if we decide we wanna do something with, if there's a crisis and you can't have flower baskets, then let's discuss that as a town and do some kind of mural fundraising kind of thing. Or I haven't seen any kind of appeal across the community. Like, we might not be able to have our flower baskets this year. So I think that was even under health and welfare.
Under leisure services.
Under leisure services, community, community services and leisure services.
Right, so community services, I just, having landscaping things. So I would, I would remove that. Another thing, police small equipment, is that ten thousand dollars, is that? What's your weapons budget? I assume that's, you know, it has tasers, range equipment listed. I mean, if, that seems to be where police small equipment, I would imagine, is where guns are, so I would reduce that by five thousand dollars. Police small equipment, I would better have.
But it's, but you don't know exactly, we don't know what it's, your guess.
No tasers, I mean, you don't often...
It could be, you know, safety vests, it could be, you know, it could be any kind of, it could be pepper spray, it could be, you know, things that are renewable that you have to, you have to buy.
It says safety, such as safety supplies, targets, range equipment, radios, radars, video systems, cruiser equipment, emergency lighting, tasers, and taser cartridges.
Those are all things, a lot of those things expire and have to replace.
I know, I'd like to cut back on the weapons. These seem very well armed, they've all, they're... This is more, I understand I'm not gonna, I just, I understand I'm not gonna convince a lot of you, or I don't really know. It's okay. It's more of my like pushback on the militarized police department. I wanna see cuts in lots of areas and this is the only way that I, or just one of the ways I know how to go to it. It's not gonna hurt my feelings that I don't convince everybody.
Sure, sure.
And I just need to propose it and get, have it be voted down, and that's fine. Gas and diesel for the police department, thirteen thousand dollars. I really want the police department to walk more, to be out on bikes, to be accessible to the community. We have an awesome police department. They are wonderful. Every time I get a chance to interact with any of them, it's virtually always a positive experience. I think anything that we can do to keep them in, more in contact with the public and out of the cars as much as possible, it should be done. So I would like to reduce their fuel budget by five thousand dollars. Four thousand dollars, down to nine, from thirteen. Parking enforcement, I think that park, the parking enforcement officer should pay for, it should be paid for through parking ticket revenues. So what we have is that it's, the salary of the parking enforcement officer isn't paid by, it's only like half, or I don't know where we are with revenues. Last time I looked, it's subsidized. It's, I just think we could, need to even up the revenues, either down with the parking, halftime with parking enforcement officer, or up with the revenues. But something, it just seems, it used to be halftime. Now it just seems to really be thoroughly, and nobody seems happy with parking in Camden. So I get a lot, I mean, I don't think that's a parking enforcement officer's fault, but people are frustrated, so...
Your discussion, I remember when we, when the net position changed, the parking enforcement officer would have other duties, like in the latter time, when parking, full-time person, parking isn't really a big deal. It was something that you'd...
AC, they're the ACO as well. Yeah. I think that's, that's the two major things they do, parking, animal control. Do you remember what else?
I think that's it.
I think that's it.
I was just, I was just sure of that.
Thank you.
So then the next thing, I think half of Randy's car should be, or forty percent of Randy's car should be paid for by Rockport.
Did we bring them up?
I do.
Have you brought it before?
I sort of did with Randy, just so I wouldn't, so I wouldn't forget. And there was the question of then who would own it? You know, and what would happen if we dissolved the agreement with, with Rockport? So there were some questions that were raised. There were no answers, there were just questions, so...
Well, I mean, Rockport could provide a car for him to drive also if they have another solution. But, I mean, something has to happen. We have eleven police officers in Camden and six, or five in Rockport. So it seems highly possible that Camden's oversized police department could be likely to subsidize Rockport. They've obviously made a decision about a lower level service. They have thirty-three hundred residents, we have forty-eight hundred residents. And there's a massive difference, it's much larger than that, in how much money is allocated. So I think we should, either not, I think just half of it should go there. I don't know how we reflect that in the budget. I would also, I wanna reduce the patrol officers by one officer. We oftentimes have vacancies for a long period of time and there isn't usually a disaster in Camden that I'm aware of when sometimes, you know, nobody ever even knows that there's a vacancy. I wouldn't want anybody to lose their job. I don't know how to reflect on a budget that by attrition, we would want it to. The next time there's a vacancy, do not fill it. I do think though with overtime, that maybe there's an opportunity there because overtime, I think we need less police presence. So rather than filling all of those shifts with overtime to send a message by reducing the overtime budget, hoping that Rockport maybe can help out. You know, we can rely on mutual aid from Rockport and Knox County, a higher percentage of the time rather than overtime. So I would reduce that by twenty thousand dollars. I guess that, oh, and then I think with the West Dam, since, I think, is it? Or maybe, I don't know, we wanna just have this police department up to... Why don't we just go through everything or...
We should probably put this to bed, I lost a couple of words here. In terms of the recommendations, but to your point about police department person by attrition, that comes through a policy statement, not necessarily through a legislative statement. Right? Because we don't, not of course, attrition tomorrow doesn't happen.
Right, and if nobody, if nobody resigns, then...
Right, and these other issues, I'm sorry.
I have some comments on it, as Allison probably knows it too.
Well, I was gonna say to the comments of, you know, there's lots of stuff you've brought up and, you know, great discussion points. I think the most productive way of approaching that may be to, you know, sit down with the police department workshop and work with our policy and work with you with that. But it's, I'm just making a special note.
It's just very expensive. It's, we spend more money on this than anything else, it's the only opportunity, one...
Nobody, nobody has permits need that...
One point two million dollars a year on this.
Thank you, and I, this town, to our point earlier about we've had some great circles in the past, we had net positions increasing, we don't have that anymore, we need to be careful. We need to, you know, I can especially vote about managing the tax process going forward. You can ten thousand dollars yourself to death, you know, before you know you're a million down and taxpayers are getting paid in raises. So we, there's no sacred covenant in the budget. It can't be, it has to be open discussion. If someone can't resolve a budget needing practice because we're kind of in the middle of the power to approve a budget. However, it doesn't mean that the special has to close out like that. I think it is important for, for the public safety in general, prior to at least, only if it works, whether it be town administration, whatever it might be. We should at least be cautious, be willing to discuss it openly in open workshop meetings. And I think all the points you brought up, we can discuss. I don't think it's limited to police department.
I certainly agree with Allison on a number of things. I just can't, at this moment, at the eleven hour, at ten thirty at night, I can't necessarily, not that it's, but I feel like I would need a little bit more time to think about it and also possibly have Randy weigh in on just those numbers because I'm not sure exactly where they came from, but I agree on a lot of principal issues.
Well, how about we just ask the police department hold their budget to the, to last year, which would be one million, it would be one thousand dollars.
Where it goes. I'd like, I'd like to weigh in. I don't think it's fair to, you know, it's, you know, I think we all understand that you have a vision of the police department different than most of the other people. I think Randy has been really responsible in keeping his budget down. He's passed off doing cars on a regular basis. He's really kept his budget as lean as he can, providing the service that he serves. You know, one of the situations with patrol officers, there's not, you know, it's, it's a function of having to supply people twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year. And that's a, that's a tough thing. You know, there are vacations, there are court appearances, as I say, that's one of the reasons they have these expenses. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a very extravagant staff, I think, providing the coverage. You have to remember the sheriff's department goes off duty at two o'clock in the morning, they all go home, they can call it from home. But, you know, when you have just one or two officers on duty at any time, there is a safety issue, you know, for those officers. You only have one person on it, you know, there's a, there's a serious safety issue. There's no predicting, a hard part about policing is there's no predicting of when you're gonna need it. And it seems like there's a lot of police and a lot of things are happening. But when things happen, you meet them and they need to be prepared to take advantage of, you know, nickel and dime, the, you know, the equipment, you know. I don't see him being extravagant, asking what he's waiting for. He doesn't place things on a, you know. I think he's been, he's been here a long time. In all the meetings we've had, he seems as responsible as anybody has been in submitting their budgets. And I don't think this is the time, I think a workshop is a really good idea so that we can sit down and say, okay, here are the questions, can you make these judgments? But to do it, I think, like, it was stated at ten thirty at night, after, you know, he's made his presentation with the budget committee, the town manager agrees with the budget, it's not fair. Taylor?
I agree on the conference, so it seems like it's been anyway. Because I feel like I have to. Oh shit. Yeah, in terms of philosophical conversation... Yeah, in terms of philosophical conversation about the police department and their presence, so I totally agree with Allison's statement about having more full control, having more police presence. I think community policing is a broad term that gets used quite a bit. I think we do a good job of that, there's always room for improvement. And I think the idea of a workshop is exactly the place to have that conversation, and I would very much like to do that. I'm, I am not comfortable making line item cuts in public safety unless we have the opportunity to ask specific questions about the effect that that's going to have on service. I'm not opposed to cutting headers to public safety, as long as I know exactly what the consequences are for that. Some of them, we just, you know, we can't predict, but without an exhaustive amount of information to back up a decision on cut, I'd like to leave the police department to it.
And, and I have to say, I do agree with Allison that I would like to see people on the streets more, you know, walking around, walking down the harbor, walking around. Access, access, as I said, access to vehicles is important because in an emergency, you can't wait, oh god, I gotta, I gotta run back to safety for 15 minutes, which is not a hurry. But I do think that, I agree 100%, but I would like to see people get out of the cars a little bit more. That's important, and I think that, that creates responsibility. Every day I drop my son off at a middle school, there's a school, and there's a police person in the building, and I always look at the person on duty, every morning I go by, and they're always sitting, looking at their computer, every single morning. And, you know, that's not the way it should be. I, I think I understand that the reason they're in the car is because they've been asked to stay in the car by school administration, because there's a confusion there about having a policeman standing out, standing outside, and maybe wrong about that, but that there's an issue there, and I think that's something that needs to be worked on. But because the best way to know your officer, have the officer know that towns, they have interaction, don't interact when they're in a car. So we agree with you 100% there.
Okay. Well, that would be progress, we could have a workshop and we could say that, so.
Yeah, and I think we can limit a workshop, we can, we shouldn't limit anything to anything going forward, it is a prior, public works, whatever, and we do need to establish a little service accessibility from a policy perspective, far and round, you know, whatever I think, so it can help Randy understand what our expectations are, making that happen, talented police association.
I will take the small risk of a less execution, ready response in exchange for more interaction and a lower budget number, and less inclined to take risks with, you know, heart attack response from an ambulance, but.
I would agree, good, great discussion, we have talked about this. Let's see, we have, we have stuff for the, we have, we have, we have.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Before Nick just said, I know she wants us to talk about libraries, we'll get a sketch quick. Please, we can say less than we want to, but I think we should talk about the library and the 22 components, I agree, it's the library budget itself, which is 475.
Sorry.
I'll give it to her.
475.
Okay, 475, which was.
Just need to.
It's on page 37, I don't know, my, 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 it is. Just, just, remember, I practiced my comments for the workshop, started, we also, I agree. I really wish we had done that, so, oh, we're going to catch up, that's what we're going to do. Because I think, as I was pushing on the school department, same thing, where are we going? We talked about this too, with the trustees, the increases over the last few years have been, we need to, we need to collectively manage that, because the town demands or whatever. But there's two, there's two components here, we're talking about, I believe, like, 475,000 plus, the capital improvement for the, this public tag is the HVAC system, $40,000, I believe, if we've gone back and forth on approval, this approval, approval. That package to me is the library baggage shift, that there are collectively, okay, my, my collectively, we have library, right, I think it's a total. Great start. I honestly believe that we need to be looking at increases annually to the cost of true inflation by the town. I mean, not substantial above that, by the way, and I say we need to, I trust you, not substantial above that, it is a little bit above that. And that does concern the town because it has risen, I mean, like, all costs over the last three years especially. Now, we are crossing this line of, or discussion, the dollar line, is a discussion about the town responsibility too, for the library needs and spacing, we discussed that, we're going to discuss that more detailably on the 20th of May, when specific items will be on the agenda. As a, so, I mean, I'm open to anybody else's thoughts, but in my opinion, maybe for my decision alone, it's not, from the perspective of the HVAC, that expenditure is technically unnecessary at this point, I would finish.
Yeah, I totally know that.
Technically, you can, anytime you want to, technically, but you know what, there are other library needs that I think capitalize that are in the equation, recently, for example, I had discussions with one of the trustees about the town entering into an energy conservation opportunity analysis for our buildings, they had libraries to do the same thing with us together. We find the results of that may change some priorities that we might want to talk about together, about the debt precious building and those precious grounds. So that's the backdrop where I'm coming from. I really don't like to jump into, from my perspective, designation, spending money on one technical area, it might not be a priority. I don't know that. And secondarily, the town has to go through a certain process of identifying what should be spent, analyzing the situation, to bidding it, if it's determined what the scope is, bidding it out, and then executing that work, no matter what happens, we have to go through that procedure, whatever, it's time, because it's not the same as providing a $475,000 check for the operations. So that's, that's just going to, that's the backdrop of thinking, we'll talk about it more, I don't give you much a chance to talk about it.
A couple of things, addressing the overall budget.
Yes.
The one thing I'm going to remind everybody listening is that the library does something that no other department does, except when you have fees, is they go out and fundraise more than 50% of their annual budget. Their annual budget is over $1 million, and they fundraise over half a million, so they actually save the town over half a million dollars every year. And that's something that people have to remember, because the library is an exceptional property and is used more by this town than any other town of, of size in Maine, and is, has the same kind of usages as Bangor does, and close to what Portland does, which is exceptional. And it's, it's because we provide such great service. Now, I'm partial to it because I use the service as tremendously, so does my wife, so does my son, I think it's important. As regards the HVAC system, one of the big problems they have with doing maintenance at the library is they have a tremendous collection that is based on paper. And because the, a lot of the building, a lot of that is based, is underground, and they've talked about this in meetings, if the system goes down, the air conditioning system goes down, they say what is mold will start to happen in 48 hours, I think?
Building, yes.
And if that, if it happens in the middle of the summer, and then it could have huge impact on the collection, the library has both books and also the historical collection. And the problem with doing maintenance these days is, is you can't call somebody up and say, can you be here in half an hour to fix it? Because if you need certain parts, you need certain systems, and if I remember correctly, one of the problems with your systems, the parts are no longer available. And so, we have a particular situation to really guarantee our collection, that we plan ahead, and like Bob said, maybe we find different vendors that can provide the end of this. Putting the money in the budget doesn't mean we have to spend it all. But it's, we're in particularly dangerous situation, if this fails, and it's been recommended, or will fail at some point, that we can't just call somebody to have it fixed in half an hour. It's not like your, your home, system goes down and you call up your heating company and they come and fix something in 20 minutes or half an hour. And that's the, that's the particular unique situation in the library, and I think we need to take care of that.
Just the control system, right, that's in jeopardy, just briefly.
Right, well, that's, 40,000 is tagged against the, so, lovely, but there is a generally, Allison, generally, discussion, I totally agree, because fundamentally, first of all, you're dealing with probability of failure of this equipment, you're dealing with probability of being able to repair it, because nothing just breaks if it can be repaired. Three, the other level you're presuming is something going to happen in the, 10% of the year when relative humidity is above 75%. And then, four, you're presuming that they can't jury break something, if there's an interim solution, why would you take three or four weeks to get it fixed? Because the rest of the world does, is they go out and talk, get the people who are in that do work like this, which we've done all over the planet, for the UBS in Florence and other places where it's a lot more expensive material to maintain, and they bring in dehumidifiers and fans to cover the situation for a sort of time period. So I don't, I don't agree that the disaster scenario closer yet, there's worth probabilities of, they multiply because of consecutive activities, it doesn't pencil by. I'm not suggesting we don't put money aside necessarily, I'm just saying that this HVAC concern about controls is, is a little overplayed, technically.
And again, the one thing I'll say is, this is money for the budget, it doesn't mean that we have to spend it.
Not that, but it, my own subtlety was, it's designated to be spent specifically on an item, and I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be that item. If it proves that item is black and white, that could be, that could be, we don't know, we don't know, we, yeah, well, that would be, one of the things we could do is change it to a special library capital fund, and we can work together, which I tried to, and still, maybe I'm not communicating very well, but I think we can work together with the library to determine whether it should be spent on controls versus something else.
I think that's a really interesting.
Because, I mean, this is all about working together, I mean, we can't sit in our seats and say, we've done, we'll do diligence, the control system, make sure you see, is the thing that needs to be replaced, maybe it is, and had my technicals produce, nothing to do it. If, if we could just designate it as a special library.
Yeah, I'd recommend you do it under the, like, take it out of the capital improvement line, because that, that area of the budget, those are projects we're going to do this year.
System project.
And instead, put it in capital reserves, as like library capital improvements.
Thanks, there.
If you wouldn't comment on that, you know, you're here, and you spent the whole night here, we should say something.
So then my, I mean, that could be there, and it could be, and then it just comes out, you and, you know, Sobyo, battling it out in the.
That, that we can, I know we can work for 50%.
Can we get a ring and boxy gloves?
Oh, no, I would lose that one.
So just to clarify on the HVAC control system, again, we were advised more than a year ago that it needed to be replaced because it was no longer, it could, could no longer be repaired. And when it failed, it was going to be a fairly big deal to replace, and it would be weeks. And that would mean in January, when it fails, it fails at whatever temperature it hits at that particular time. So if it fails at 2:00 AM, we won't be able to get temperatures above 58 or 60.
But freezing, freezing.
Well, no, but it does, it does mean that.
It does freeze pipes and.
Right.
Or, yeah.
So I'm not saying it's, you know, I understand what you're saying, but that's the advice that we've gotten, and we have had two quotes on it as well. Given, okay, but, you know, that's dead. We, the building has lots of needs, as we discussed, and we dipped into at the workshop. We are facing, and you know, you remember the laundry list that I went over, and we're facing lots of repair work that needs to be, that needs to happen in the next couple of years. So I'm, you know, very happy to continue to work with you, and I hope that I made that clear.
You did.
That, and because it is a town-owned building, we're part of the town in that respect, and we need, we need to work together to make sure that it does remain that, as you want it to, absolutely.
Well, I'm just saying, especially in the phase range, we should have any one workshop together, unfortunately. Yeah, the funnies will be next one, I think we've been getting some more of these details. We're putting, we're putting aside funds to do something. As the call was saying, is we don't need, don't need to, and we shouldn't designate for that line, and maybe there's 90% chance it will go that way, I don't know. But I know we need, we need to tell them, we need to do our new diligence to make sure that is the case. I believe, I have to admit, just a little bit background, 40 years of this, that, you know, anything I've seen, if that library, in this summer, in July, there's a huge hurricane, knocked out all the power for months, about to finish, you got other problems. So if you don't, if you want to get disaster scenarios, I've seen them, I actually had to live through them, and had to come up with, live contingency plans, I believe there are contingency plans, some which haven't been, but you know, this is just kind of, that's all. And I kind of eulogize the facility a little bit, no agreements or anything, that's why I believe you, the same age you are, but I'm just suggesting, I'm just suggesting that this is a way to put some money in the budget for us to talk about and see how we want to get it.
Sure, absolutely.
That's it, that's it.
I also just wanted to put on the record that we did do an energy audit in 2010 or 11, I would do, but it's definitely time to do it again, absolutely. We did make some improvements, we did a lot work to our HVAC system, mechanics of it at that point in time, there was a lot of the stateless funding, a lot of, a lot of projects at that point, and we were very fortunate to get a lot of.
Yeah, technically, except by, my thing is, maybe comparing HVAC control system as it is, the existing system, maybe the wrong position.
Maybe, maybe what?
Maybe the wrong position. You've got, you've got two separate systems, you've got, right, and you've got HVAC, that thing, right? The, the, that thing, that's the other thing. If, if, we can take a look at it more macroscopically, maybe bigger than $40,000, we have to work on that.
What are you suggesting for the budget tonight?
I suggest we, you know, we change the qualification of 40,000 to special library project funding, or whatever, and not go into the capital improvement budget, but go into reserve funds.
Capital reserve.
Maybe capital reserve.
It's the same thing.
You leave the amount the same?
Sorry. The, the money doesn't change, but then that money doesn't change.
Just the designation.
It's just different, well, I think the philosophical approach between us, we're working on it, and I, the first would admit, when I said during our workshop, I wish we had a, my bad, we're just doing it now, and, and.
Yes.
A lot's discussed decades ago, you mentioned the heat, although, library, we can't let it die, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, that's it.
Any other comments from the sideboard members?
That one, yeah, I think that was. So any final bid or awarding of contract would also, that would come from here.
Well, I think Laura and I would work on that, is what you're saying.
We're going to first evaluate together, you know, why wouldn't I not need, and what you have staff, great staff, we can have, I offered discussing, the performance here on the day of the whole project, 12 hours, there are other entities, and we'll, and we'll talk to them together, and yet, not more quotes, but we're ideas of energy, of the building, I think, is collective thing we can do together. Again, you know, for you, for us, we're kind of on a curve.
But I mean, it wouldn't be just you and I for talking about that, I understand, is that specifically by not just adding it to the, you know, annual allocation that the town gives to the library, it's actually pulling it out and saying, okay, now this is going to be, we're doubling down on the town-owned building aspect of it, and it would be ultimately the select board that would say, yes, we're writing, it would appear in like the town warrants, things where we would sign off, rather than.
Put that capital reserve.
Put that capital reserve.
And I mean, it's free to spend out of that, any reserve account, for the town to spend out of any reserve account, it needs to come to the select board for authorization.
Right.
I would say the two of you having a good formulated plan, a presentation, a discussion.
I see this as a positive step.
I think so, yeah. I see it as a positive step.
I think it's much like, you know, Dave comes to us when it's wastewater, Greg comes to us when it's, for public works, and, and so the whole town gets to see, you know, through these meetings, gets to see what's, what's presented, what's approved, and why.
This, this came by the parties, come in, and she said, okay, right, the headboard partnership. So, so.
This won't affect the budget. We can keep going now.
But it's like...
We don't want to talk about that.
And I hope we do. Actually, we would like to be included in that conversation and maybe at the workshop, we can start going.
Absolutely, no doubt. It's absolutely an agenda.
Absolutely.
Because there's all kinds of things going on.
Okay. Because there is one scenario that would actually impact our progress.
It's kind of the only thing.
Yeah. We'll need like a subcommittee or something. Great.
Thank you very much.
It's been so long making it to this point. But anyway, back to your point of $50,000 potential.
Right. So there's that, you know, there's the Montgomery situation and then there's the fact that we have $290,000 that we're looking at spending on the West Dam, which really the way to move forward with any of this and not move backwards is to make sure that every time we put hundreds of thousands of dollars into one of our dams, that we make sure that we're not losing options, I think. What just happened with Seabright is a perfect example. We said, you know what, we're just going to consider this whole packing thing, we're just going to consider it as a separate thing and we're going to deal with all the other stuff later. Well, you know what, you got hundreds of thousand dollars more and I wish very much that I pushed to say, you know what, let's just look comprehensively at that dam. And so I think we should need to do the same thing with the West Dam. There's certainly have two outlet dams at the lake. We obviously need to keep the outlet dams because we want to keep the lake levels, but do we need two dams with full control systems? Can we control the level of lake in one dam and the other one is the way that the fish get through? There are a lot of things. So we should make sure that at the very least, we study the options with the West Dam before we put hundreds of thousands of dollars into it. So that one, I think we could...
How much did you give us?
Two ninety.
Two ninety. And so is that something that we're going to bond out right away, no matter how does that?
No, I just talked with Dave Goldstridge about this today and we're going to look at other options to reduce the cost of that project. But I do think that maybe like putting an extra $50,000 into that for the purpose of giving us the ability to study our options or, you know, maybe it's a little bit more, you know, whatever the case may be, I don't think that would go amiss. And I think that, you know, if we don't end up spending all of that on the West Dam, there's plenty of other priorities in terms of dam projects that could always come back to you and have a discussion.
And West Dam.
Oh, it's...
So what are you proposing to do, take the 50 out of wastewater?
I mean, what you could do to keep it wide open is take the 50 out of the wastewater and just put it straight into the dam reserve account. And then that would give us the ability to put it, you know, apply it to West Dam or apply it to Montgomery.
What is the payment rate power of that?
We've budgeted 40 for this year, so instead of 90 in there.
Yeah.
Fine.
Because right now, we don't even have enough to do. We're not even close to being able to do the status quo option for the Montgomery debt concrete costs of bound up, even when we voted on this debt two years ago, the 65 wasn't even enough, not then for what we wanted to do just to maintain the status quo.
Did we, in fact, use the full 65?
Yes, we did.
So if we use the full 65 for Seabright, that should be where we replenish.
Yes.
So it should be 65,000 put into the dam reserve, 50,000 in coming from wastewater. What do we just make with the 54, 50 and wastewater?
You mean the wastewater 50?
Yeah.
I mean, that could be what you use to buffer the impact rate payers.
Yeah.
I think Taylor's fine, but it's kind of more...
Give us options.
Well, it's kind of, we have to have a discussion in the public hearing soon about the philosophy of this rate base. Payers paying for wastewater treatment plan up here.
Right.
If you get in agreement to reduce that, well, we can possibly in the next years from this project, at least four or five years from now. And so if we were doing $100,000 a year and whatever, over the next years, we may have half that money. So allow us to further reduce the debt that we pay for the pay as an option. I mean, if we can work it great, if we can't, we're in trouble right now, obviously. I don't want to go over $50,000, mind you.
What you're saying is that if, I mean, we were padding it for debt service to the town, we'd have taken it to tax. You're saying philosophically, continue to do that, we're just paying it back in a different amount.
That's correct. That's correct. It's just another way to reduce the big impact. But I'm also suggesting this, is reserve philosophically 65,000 out of Seabright. Montgomery using Seabright, we should put 65,000 back into the reserve on dam and what would reduce the baseball by 50%. So if it, if it came. It's a revenue, it's a revenue number. We're replenishing what we took.
Yeah, I mean, it sort of makes sense, except for the fact that the money that was originally voted on to spend, to fix the monitor, maintain the status quo of Montgomery, and we knew two years ago that that wasn't even enough to do that. So it's kind of, it's like, well, we took it, but, you know, the dam needs money and we put it in the right... I just don't want that money to get taken out and used on Seabright or some other dam issue again, but...
Just a point of clarification. Yeah. Okay, so we budgeted so far, without changing anything, we've got $40,000 that we budgeted to put into the dam reserve. So to get us, you know, we put like, are we okay with putting an additional 50 on top of that or do you just want to replenish the 65?
Oh, no, I was putting, on top of the 40, I was putting 65.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see what you mean.
Like 65, philosophically replacing the money we spent on Seabright. So it would be 105 per dam, but we would take 50,000 reduction in the wastewater 100,000.
Gotcha. Ideally, we can get grants for a lot of this, but this is...
And this is going to be expensive.
Right, we have to have matching funds and we also have to be able to show that the town has, is, you know, supporting.
Right.
Which is one reason we would put it in the other, in the thing named the other.
One of the next kind of big decisions we're going to have to make is about a feasibility study for the rest of the river.
Right.
And how that's, I mean, hopefully we could get a grant to do it, but maybe we can't. And do we want to keep waiting for different funding samples?
And it's not going to be that bad because a lot of the initial work is already done through the Montgomery.
Right.
It's under, my, it'll, 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 my funds. And so anybody else have any more?
Um, just a request. Yeah, just 10,000 dollars. I've had several people bring up to me a lot of concern over the state of the Mount view Cemetery. Mountview Cemetery is our oldest, most historic cemetery. It takes up a huge part of the town. The people who started this town, created this town, they're buried there. Many of them have stones that are not being taken care of, they're falling into the, there are just too many. But the Cemetery Association was a great job keeping things under control during the cost. But there are a number of people and I would count myself among them concerned about just like what it looks like for our town that we're not, we're allowing like the stones of the people that died in the early 1800s to literally be sucked into the ground and you can't see the stone anymore. And so I don't know if we can find 10... The proposal that has been made to me is that 10,000 dollars be added to, you know, so the town can start chipping away at these types of things. Maybe that's something that can come out as a select board contingency. Later on, I noticed that the school board has a 65,000 dollar select board, or a school board contingency.
60,000?
We have 40.
No, no, 60,000.
Oh.
40,000.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, yeah, well, I'm just trying to think of what's, that's where you started. I mean, we take, we just, why is 10 the measurement? Why is it 50 to 50? I think...
How about cemetery reserve or...
It'd have to be cemetery reserve, I guess.
The trees are there, you know, there's a lot of stuff.
Well, I mean, start off as long as you don't exceed it as long as it has to be done.
Uh, no, it could be 50.
I would exceed it as long as, as soon as it's a line that we go forward.
I think 50 to 50 is probably not, I definitely agree with the idea of it not having more of it, that makes a good start.
Yeah.
Though these volunteer programs, we can get them, old Cemetery Association will come in and they'll teach you how to clean and...
Yeah. We're recognizing this, we're recognizing the problem, trying to do something to start the first day, try to start the first day, first day of 50,000 dollars.
And it shows that we're not stealing our cemetery.
Sure. That's a key here for likely what I did. Anything else?
Oh, what did everybody else think about the garden club being on like a list of community welfare organizations?
Well, I can jump on it because frankly, the total number we're spending from last year, which you said, including the garden club.
Yeah, we're teaching them some community welfare, the idea is like helping poor people.
I was surprised everybody in the community was playing the public.
There we have some various... If we're going to put money into that, I'd rather just have us do it so that we get to say, you know what, we're going to contract with you to do the flower pots or the wreaths and you're going to have to recycle everything, you're going to have to do, I don't, I don't want to contract that out to the garden club to then use. I'd rather just bring it in here if we decide...
Is that too much like we're managing now? I mean...
As a town, I feel like I should let this one go. I know the glass and the transportation from the wreaths and stuff is, I definitely think that should be addressed, but I don't know that this is the way or the place to do it. Maybe that I'm like thinking my tired brain, but...
This is the first time taxpayers have ever been asked to pay for it.
True.
So you take out lights, you've got those Christmas lights, so the Christmas, no?
It's brand new.
Brand new. So the Christmas lights that go around, you've got these wreaths, right? And they're, they have lights on them and they go up on all the town goals or whatever. And when it comes time to take them down, it's too expensive or too time consuming to take the lights off or whatever, they just throw out the whole thing and it's...
It's not throwing out, it's...
Well, that, that we assumed was an accident, but it's, it's not really anything a town feels proud about. So I'm not willing to give money to that. If we're going to, if we're going to invest, the town wants to invest in wreaths and, I mean, this is like a tradition in Camden where all these streetlights have been, it's been a privately fundraised thing. I'd rather just try to fundraise, we want to start one of our special...
Why did they, why did they come to us to promote budgets this year?
They had a, I wish I had the letter in front of me. I read the letter and I felt very comfortable with the way it described it. I understand what you're saying, but we're psyched.
Budget committee actually suggested doubling it, which they then voted down.
Right. John French won the double.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I'll just make the motion that we reduce it by 3,000 dollars and we remove the Kennedy Garden, but we, you know, support the effort in a different way.
To a job close? Are you reading the letter too?
I, yeah. I mean, I'm just looking at it as like a work contingency and we come up, we approve that, you know, vendor or something. I seriously think if we just do a quick fundraising campaign, this is...
Well, if you agree, move it to a place where it's going to be potentially spent on, so that work contingency is still a budget.
No, I don't, it would have to be like, well, we don't have to have a lot of contingency items, so this is a difference. This is something that's always been privately fundraised. Now we're saying, you know what, Camden taxpayers are going to pay for it. If we're going to do that, then why not just put it in our person rec budget?
The letter that they gave us names several different projects that this would be supporting in addition to the wreaths. So if you want, I can read them to you. It's up to you.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So current projects, lamppost decorations of 50 hanging baskets in summer and 98 lighted wreaths in winter, two traffic islands and the Chamber of Commerce flower bed, Union Street Arch flower boxes, Village Green cleanup, mulching and plant replacement, children's amphitheater at Lake Beach and the watering, weeding and fertilizing care of all such plantings.
That's everything you do. That's the crazy thing you do. So 3,000 can contribute to that whole thing.
Right.
Not pay for that part.
Contributing to it, yes.
A contentious objector to the, to the reef system that we have and the fact that we get, we contract out the flower pots to Farley and then they sometimes get mad or thinking the town has, it's just a, it's, I'd rather increase the person rec budget if we're going to absorb this. But we don't, it's a silly thing to talk about for hours.
Well, we, we believe in the, believe in being funded. It's in the budget thing that I believe Tom Andrew approved it to. I think, I think it's probably smart to put it in place, but not with the...
I'm very grateful that we don't have to logistically deal with the flower baskets and the wreaths.
How are you dealing with them?
That's much the life.
Well, I've had to, I've had to intimately deal with it in Brooklyn and it is not fun or pleasant.
We're not going through a lot of literature because they're, I mean, we get to weigh in on that.
And we have to admit, we should talk to everyone when we're watching this and maybe not find that we're, that's where it's at.
It's our public works department, so we're worried for a bunch of them.
Just leave these, it's not what you're saying.
Okay, is the same.
But I think we should be told that there are issues we have, that I agree, I just want to tell money or something. Well, my, my, yeah, my thing is, I think just came into the equation, a bunch of other people are punching, right, they may not own the others. I've never heard that.
No, they quite complain to society because they say, I started in the...
That's cool.
No, they did, that's, that was the philosophy. I'm not making criticisms. Okay, well, I can always bring it up at town meeting.
If anything else on the...
On the reef stage.
Do I figure any cases in the budget?
I'll say something after we've ordered.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that...
Red detail will change this.
I make a motion that we approve the amended budget in all the ways we just amended it.
Okay, okay, okay.
You guys have been jumping all over the place and I, I think I got it down.
Joanie, do you want to read a summary of what the changes are?
Yes, in addition, well, I'll read off what was, what was presented initially by Audra. So we've got for expenses, streetlights electricity increase of 20,000. Police Department health insurance increase of 11,000. Debt service, streetlight conversion, prints payment, decrease of 20,000. Capital reserves, snowball, zero, so decrease to 25,000. Harbor projects, decrease of 10,000. Tree conservation, a decrease of 5,000. Police cruiser, decrease of 8,000. Under capital improvements. Also under, in capital improvements, streetlight, streetlight purchase, increase of 160,000. Library is no change, let me just make that change. Oops. Okay, zero. Under, and this is still just this, I have more. Under revenues, interest earned, increase of 15,000. Trust fund income, decrease of 20,500. Under other financing sources, bond, no proceeds, increase of 160,000.
In the surplus?
In the surplus, there's no increase right now. And then...
The surplus was a decrease.
It was for the 40,000, but I fixed that. And then I also have wastewater reserve, we are decreasing it by 50,000. Library, we are adding, we're going to be funding 40,000, library reserve, right?
Not capital reserve?
No, reserve. Yep. Tree conservation is, is 10,000. Dam reserve is going to be 105,000. And then we have a cemetery reserve for 5,000.
That's correct.
Okay. So the summary brings us to four, 4% increase.
Because we...
We, we moved, we brought the, we lowered the wastewater to 50,000. We added 65 to the 40 in the dam reserve.
The library and the capital improvements. That's not 40, that's only 15,000 dollars.
Yep, so what you, so what we would need to do, and I think there was talk about it, is we need to add that 40,000 back into this, using it from surplus.
Yes.
Okay. All right, let me make that change.
But what does that change exactly?
That makes us 3.3%.
It's the 60,000. Okay, now if you're fired.
No, that's just because you voted against holding the line of police department.
I would say...
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so. Anything else? Well, I, I agree, it's hard. I'm going to block that to 2.5%. I'm going to 3.3.
3.33.
Are you still here? Because we said yes to everybody or no to... I don't think we knew anything though. They were afraid of what we're going to do next.
Kind of.
I'm super happy there.
What is, what is 50,000 dollars to 60,000?
I'm sorry?
Take 50,000 on the number one percentage to come to. Just remove it. Just deduct 50,000.
Just add the police department.
Oh, to remove it out of the budget, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Expenses.
Or increase that.
Oh, yeah, we could have more parking money.
We're going to go to different windows here. So...
We should have all the time choice for us somewhere else and we could sell those parking spots. We could probably do...
Sell the whole lot.
So if you took 50,000 out, it would be a 2.48% increase.
Oh.
I remember about flushing money.
I really wish to, just 50,000?
That was a nice one, yeah. I mean, sure it wasn't, yes, but...
Where I'm going with this is make a decision, a whole deeper decision, maybe not there on the wastewater. We're just entering this, things are changing.
It's a great deal for us.
So if we did...
I need to say...
Anybody thinking of a...
I mean, we're basically going forward to see where this goes because there's a lot of, there's a lot of jurisdictions going to happen between now and this part of the exact finish, not to lose it, which is the market.
Are you talking about reducing sticking?
So if you put...
It's almost like putting money into their lap.
I say it kind of as a 25.
If you did 30,000 in your wastewater, it brings you to 2.99%.
How are we real, how much we're really cushioning rate payers by adding in 30,000 dollars anyway? It's ridiculous and it's not going to help the people that we, that really most need the help. It makes no sense.
That's right.
Right, so why don't we just let the, let the impact hit and then we'll target the people that really need help?
Assuming we do that.
I mean, it's just kind of like a...
So you're saying, you're saying we just get rid of that line?
Yes.
Okay.
Get rid of it?
I...
Sorry, I'm going to stay.
I'm saying 50,000, saving the 50,000.
The whole thing?
The whole thing. I'm not interested, I am desertizing any of it, really.
Take out the 50, take it all out, take out all the wastewater this year.
So it would be 2.48%.
All right.
Audrey, how do you feel about that?
Hey, I'm good with that.
There are a lot of opportunities for compensation because you paid.
Yeah, you're right.
How can you...
I want you to use my body language.
I think, I think as long as the just, the ultimate decision is to pay for this with rates as opposed to taxes, this is not a problem.
Right, 20,000, 30,000 here and there is not...
I mean, if we're always spreading over the users, does people like, if it was 50,000 and we're just spreading, we leave them on...
No, no, it's based on how much you use.
All right.
So your, your higher volume users get...
Yeah, it's still spreading, yeah.
Yeah, what?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the select board budget comes in 2.48%.
Start it. Any discussion? All in favor?
I guess we would, yeah, because...
Okay.
We can only vote on the individual.
No, well, you can, you still can.
Right.
We need to make a couple, a couple of homework items we need to review and approve for 2019 June annual town meeting warrant, which you hopefully already backed.
Yeah, I think that we approved the annual town warrant.
Second. Oh, well, wow. So there's like no, no words at all under the TUPC stabilization?
Oh.
It was just like restrict TUPC stabilization, MRC funds to Jacob's for exposure. Yes, I was going to ask, are you going to Lincolnville model?
You're not going to set that out?
No.
I was going to stick with that.
Do we, you know, the model language?
I'm going to stick with that, that's fine.
Is that what we are supposed to put there or was there other language or past?
So we just take our, our motion that we pass...
That's how we have to be in.
In this case, we will do a great job to be able to transfer, to give us...
I mean, that's fine, I don't mind it, but...
We would restrict...
Like a one-year-old at home.
That MRC funds to Jacob's for exposure independently of where they're held.
That's what I was hearing though.
And it will allow the, the lack for to transfer those funds to make a solid waste after holding a public hearing.
Yep.
So that if I go on the select board at the time, I can come in and say, you guys were overlooking something in print. It gives, I think it's appropriate.
Language.
Like I think, I mean, it works.
Yeah.
We're not getting on that.
See ya.
Yep, so you can, if, if everybody agrees to that conceptually, you can approve the warrant and I'll put that language in there.
I agree.
And then, yeah, that's fine because third, like we said, open floor.
Right, yeah.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the annual town meeting warrant with the addition of the bridge to Article 16.
Second.
All in favor?
Great, we'll just sign that one.
The other two items on the agenda are both countersignatures, a physical countersignature, so they're going to counter sign them. There's school, I mean, to two school boards for their budget. So this, I mean, this motion, I don't want to sign it this year, but that's countersignature. The last item on the agenda is just that we, since it's badly get this stuff out of our... I didn't even realize that we had a guideline for committees' board commissions. And what we did here was took a JSC, which is a great document, and added into the folder, a little bit more folder information, added into the video requirement. I think Mark, you got one comment you want to make?
I have one comment. I'm going to go first.
It was under the committee chair, guest, we...
It's like we're requesting all communications between committees, boards and the town manager, select board company, committee board chair. I would rather say that the select board recommends rather than...
Yeah, because I don't want to constitute an individual committee member for contacting me.
Well, no, it depends. Sometimes, sometimes I want some individual people to have that.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I say recommends.
What number is that, Mark?
Number 15. The select board recommends that all communications. So that, that recommends...
It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to.
Right, it's like official...
I have any positions.
Yeah, I like that language, actually. I think it's, it makes sense and it's all...
And maybe you can change it if I start the report.
I thought it was fascinating. I haven't seen it before either.
Would that change, Mark?